Ms. Berberaza?
Here.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Present.
Mr. Valencia?
Present.
Mr. Langham?
Here.
Perfect, thank you. Turn it back over to Mr. Stembridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair, picking up the 11 o'clock hearing cases. This case is BOA 1442155 with the address of 85 West Newton Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, introduce yourself and walk us through your project, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you so much, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. My name is Vanessa Calderon Rosado. I am Chief Executive Officer of IBA in Kilino's, but it was an accion. And thank you for giving me and my colleagues the opportunity to speak about the project at 85 West Newton Street, which we call IBA's CASA, Art Center for Arts Self-Determination and Activism. IBA is a nationally recognized community development corporation in Boston's South End. And our new CASA will be New England's largest Latinx multipurpose center, providing flexible and well-equipped spaces necessary to advancing IBA's mission. The CASA will be home for our staff members, for our community of residents of Villa Victoria, as well as for residents of the South End, to learn, to grow, to perform, and most of all, to gather as a community. As Boston's new home for Latinx arts and community empowerment, the CASA will reinvigorate IBA's arts programs. It will expand IBA's education, social, and economic mobility programs. And it will strengthen IBA's workplace and program efficiencies. This site is close to the homes of the primary beneficiaries of the project that we're proposing here today, who are over 1,100 residents of Villa Victoria, which is IBA's affordable housing community in the South End. The majority of IBA's residents aren't at or less than $30,000 per year. And the completion of this project will allow us, IBA, to continue to expand and enhance the important programming that we have been doing for over 55 years, exactly near where our residents live. And also open up great opportunities for the community of the South End, for our neighborhood, and also for our city. So I will turn it over to our development consultant, Peter Monkenbeck, who will now present regarding the legal and technical issues related to the appeal that we're presenting to you today. And also, again, would like to request presenting capabilities for Natasha Espada, our architect of record for the project. Thank you so much. Peter?
Thank you. My name is Peter Monkenbeck with an address of 33 Sparks.
Mr. Monkenbeck, can you speak up?
My name is Peter Monkenbeck.
Thank you.
With an address of 33 Sparks Street in Cambridge. And I would like to just recite quickly that the application requires relief from the code for its four-story, multipurpose community arts center with offices and educational space. The community center will serve the multiple uses of auditorium, theater, arts, both gallery, studio, and public displays, and ticket sales. And the building will also include the offices and a professional school on the upper levels, and has a low roof terrace. Some of these uses are forbidden by the zoning court in this location because it is a residential district. And some require a conditional use variance. Also, the code requires, would limit the floor area to an area which is smaller than that which we propose. And we also do not have, cannot meet the rear yard requirements. I can go through that in more detail, but all of it is spelled out precisely in the application. And happy to take any questions on that part. I just want to say the site was for 40 years, serving almost exactly the same purposes as I just recited. It has been the community center for this neighborhood as a converted church since the 1980s. The church was taken down because it was structurally unsound. And this building is approximately the same size and scale and the same purposes. And with that, I would ask, if you have promoted Natasha Espada, she would walk through the design, as she is the lead architect on the project along with Anne Veyham?
I'm here, Peter, and whole board. Is there any way that I can present from my screen?
We don't do that.
Okay, then I can just talk about, then I can just talk about the drawings that are up here on the board. Okay, so the building, as Vanessa and as Peter mentioned, is a 26,400 square foot, four-story building at 85 West Newton Street. It's adjacent to the O'Dade Park, with a higher volume, as you see here, four-story volume on West Newton Street, and a lower volume for the multipurpose room inside the block, which is what you see here on the right-hand side with all of the glass. The building is terracotta, the materials are terracotta, brick, glass, and metal. The height of the main building is approximately 54 feet, with the roof screen elevation of 60 feet. And as Peter and Vanessa mentioned, the building program includes a multipurpose room on the first floor, a new lobby right off of West Newton Street. It also has upper levels or gallery office space for resident services, as well as IBA, and meeting rooms, and a roof deck over the multipurpose room in the center of the site overlooking the park as well. The building will be LEED certified, and the first floor will be increased to 18 feet one for resiliency. And basically, it's all glass on the first level and on the public side. And on the private side, it is brick and more punched openings.
Go quickly through the slides, Madam Ambassador. Just, you can just scroll through them, and people can ask questions based on anything that they see that one asked about.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
If you can please talk about the sustainability measures and also parking.
So there.
I'm sorry, let me just address the parking first, which is that there is, there is no parking proposed, nor is any required under the code.
Right, so can you please talk about the sustainability and then in terms of, it's a community center where you have large crowds, how would you mitigate that in terms of over or shared ride services?
With regard to access, we are, as you can probably picture, we're a short portion of a block away from Tremont Street, which has multiple frequent bus service. And we also are a fairly short walk to both Orange and Green Line. And a majority of the people who will be using the facility on a regular basis live within a very short walk of it. There will be, no doubt, some people will arrive, as you suggest, by service, car service. And there will be curb space in front of the building we will propose to be that will be reserved for pickup and drop-off, as well as loading and unloading of anything necessary to support the function.
And regarding the LEED, I can speak to that. Regarding the site, the site has no irrigation, it will have some permeable pavers, it will have a stormwater retention system. It will also, it's near all the public transportation and all of that. Regarding the systems, it's a completely electrified building. It also has LED lighting, it has low-flow plumbing. We're looking at, for materials, we're looking at all of the materials be as locally resourced as possible. We're looking at the carbon footprint of the building, we're looking at the the carbon of the materials. And we're looking, and we're looking at, it does have glass and terracotta. We're doing an energy model for all of that, and we're doing commissioning as well. And we're doing a white roof at the upper level, and we're doing, the lower level has a, right now, it's just a roof deck. So we're also looking at opportunities there for any kind of planting or any kind of water we're retaining on the site there. Trying to think of any others. But mostly, mostly the electrified system is really important. We're not bringing any fossil fuels into the building.
Two quick questions for Ms. Dr. Calderon Rosado. Is IBA going to move your main offices to this building? That is the first question. And the second one is about the professional school. What kind of school are you proposing, what kind of classes or services? And for what ages or demographics are you proposing this?
Sure. The building will house all of IBA's programs and administrative offices except for the early education program, which is the program for infant toddlers and preschoolers that will be housed at 100 West Eden Street. But all the other programs and functions of IBA, including property management, will be housed at this particular building. There's no really going to be a professional school here. I think that's, you know, a confusion there. But there's going to be mostly programmatic spaces, our youth development program, for our financial empowerment program, for our residence services, for property management, and of course, for the arts programming. So those are the five program areas that will be housed there in addition to the administrative offices and other administrative functions. This will allow us to also free up, the building we're currently in at Tucson One, which our plan is that eventually, once this project is completed, that building will turn into affordable housing development. So we can add affordable housing needs to our footprint, to the neighborhood, but that would be further down the road.
Thank you.
Valencia, the reason that we mention professional school is perhaps in excess of caution, but we will have classrooms. We do have after-school and teenage classes that we run. And that's, it seemed appropriate to cite that since practically everything is forbidden in the zone.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
No further questions, I'll be interested to hear what the community process was.
Thank you. Okay, with that, can we open it up to public testimony?
Hi, yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kim Chrisily with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant went through an extensive BPDA process, as well as a community process, met with multiple community groups. It was widely supported throughout the South End community. This would be a great addition to the community, and at this time, our office would like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Flynn's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support. Sorry, the councilor would like to go on record in support. IBA has dedicated itself to empowering Boston's most vulnerable citizens with high-quality housing, education, economic opportunities, and a space for artists and residents of all ages to thrive. IBA will be New England's largest Latinx multipurpose center and will become a home for the IBA family and residents of the South End to learn, grow, perform, and most of all, to gather as a community. The councilor would like the board to take into consideration and approve this proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Councilwoman Michael Flaherty, echoing the sentiments of Council President Flynn, the council would like to go on record in strong support.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tom Daniel, Council Eric Murphy's office. At this time, Council Murphy would also like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Cindy Jurey from the Department of Council of the Division. She would also like to go on support of the project.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Seminelli, Boston Groundwater Trust. And we have both key card letters from the applicant.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Oh, sorry, this is Madam Chair, members of the board. Haley Dillon from Senator Nick Collins' office. He sent a letter to Madam Chair in support, and would like to go on record in support of this testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Mino Perez, representing the carpenters' union. On behalf of hundreds of killing carpenters that live and work for the city of Boston, want to go on record in support of this project.
Thank you. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I want to recognize that IBA is a very important community anchor to its South End's residents. I want to support this project. I would like to state that IBA continues with mitigation with its neighbor because it is in the neighborhood, because it's in the neighborhood, that they find ways in which they are communicative throughout the construction process, issues that deal with residents' well-being. And that they are, that they continue to be a partner where local schools in the neighborhood, I think Hurley, the Hurley School is there. With that, I want to give my complete support of motion of approval.
Thank you, may I have a second?
I second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Great project, projects for the community, I vote yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck, this is a great, great addition to the community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Congrats.
Next, we have case BOA 14246. The address being 79 Perkins Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes.
Yes, can you introduce yourself and the project?
My name is Luis Santana. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. I am here on behalf of the, Mr. Christie Page. This is a conversion of the basement area into a dwelling unit for family members, specifically for his daughter and son. This particular house is located in a 3F district, which is a three-family. So there are a number of variances required. One of them is the, and actually, the only significant one, in my opinion, would be the use itself. The family dwelling is forbidden in this particular district. And the other, the other variances are pretty much standard because of the additional lot area. This is a slightly over 5,000 square feet lot. And the office parking requirements and floor area ratio. The basement unit, and actually, just for your information, as you will be able to see on the elevations, a large portion of the perimeter of this unit is above grade. It's still considered a basement that is significantly above grade compared to other structures. The unit consists of two bedrooms. You will have adequate means of egress. We have added multiple windows to comply with the core requirements for emergency escape egress from those bedrooms. And also to provide adequate light ventilation for the unit. This, Mr. Page, has been already in multiple locations in front of the JP Association, seeking approval for the project. There are, in this area, there are multiple, there is a variety of users. And right within this block, there are multiple three families. And on the next block, you even have a high-rise. There are five and multiple-story buildings in the vicinity. Across the street, you have predominantly, well, it's just one and two-family dwellings. And to the left and to the right, there are generally multifamily dwellings. I would like to point out, and this is significant because I believe is one of the variances in which some opposition has been expressed from some members of the community, is the parking area. This is an 80-foot driveway, almost, in length. It goes across the entire length of the lot. And we could provide adequate parking in terms of the numbers, as shown on this diagram. This architectural site plan shows that there are five cars. Only four are required per code. Now, that being said, if we position these vehicles one behind the other, and we will comply with the number of spaces required, that would trigger a different violation, which is parking in the front yard. So that's why we opt to go along with the sufficient office parking. But there is, there is sufficient spaces to accommodate the proportions. The other thing that I want to point out is that we have the criterias, Mr. Page has gotten approval, we have at least 50 layers of support from the community. There is also a, the three-square community group that has support, Mr. Page. And in addition, he's a long-term resident of Jamaica Plain over 20 years. That being said, his, his home, his residence is two houses down that same street, 69 Parking Street. So the, in my opinion, all the criterias for a variance on Article 7 are met.
Thank you.
This will not be detrimental to the neighborhood, to the character of the.
Let's, let's open it up to board questions. Any questions from the board? Recording in progress.
And no questions.
Okay.
If I may, Madam Chair, with your permission, I would like also to allow Mr. Page to present, to speak on his, on behalf, so he can explain the research, why it's necessary to extend living space.
Sure, Mr. Page. Is Mr. Page a panelist?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Christopher Page. I live at 67 Perkins Street, and I also own the home at 79 Perkins Street. Several years ago, both my kids came to me and asked if I had any room at the house, which I didn't, I have long-term tenants at my own home. And I, my, my kids know the house that I own next door, two doors away. And they said, well, what about your basement next door? And I said, well, I don't know if I could do that, but I'd give it a try. So for the last three years, I've been back and forth with local community groups. And I'm at this stage now, you guys. So I'd like to keep my kids living and working in the city. They both work in the city, one is a carpenter, and the other is a psychologist, helping with drug reform, with one of the organizations in the city of Boston. So they'd like to stay in the city, and I'd like to have them close to me as I get older. So makes a lot of sense, but obviously, it's out of my hands, and it's up to you guys to vote on it. So appreciate your time and your help. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you, sir. With that, now. With that, may I open it up to public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Colin Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office has deferred to the judgment of this board, some background information on the community process. A butter's meeting was facilitated by our office on February sixteenth of this year. Throughout the community process, the proponent and their team acquired support from elected officials, as well as many direct butters and/or community members. Our office currently has six letters of support, and two in opposition from the JPA, as well as the JPNC zoning committee. At this time, our Mayor's Office would like to defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Any other raised- Yes, Madam Chair, I have Lynn. You've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please. Lynn? She wanted to speak in support of the project. Any other raised hands? No.
I wanted to speak in support of the project of Jamaica Plain NDC, not this one.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, with that- Sorry about that. That's okay. May, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve with the BPDA design review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck, Mr. Page.
Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you.
The next two cases are companion cases. First being BOA one, four, three, five, five, eight, two, with the address of one-ten to one-eighteen Terrace Street. With that is BOA one, four, three, six, five, seven, seven, with the same address of one-ten to one-eighteen Terrace Street, and these are both Article eighty projects.
Mr. Ross available?
Yeah. Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Attorney Mike Ross from the law firm in Prince Lobel. Good afternoon to you. I'm here with architect Nick Elton, and also, being that there is also a building code, Madam Chair, we have code consultant Doug Anderson with us, and I was just going to suggest, if I could, Madam Chairs, it might be better to have me go through and familiarize the board with the underlying zoning project, so that you can then, when you get to the building code, it will make more sense, but it's obviously your, your call.
I think if you could just briefly walk us through what you need to, please, please proceed.
Okay. Thank you so much. So this is an Article eighty large project review. It was approved by the BPDA on November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. It's a seventy-nine-unit, thirty-two parking space, retail space, mixed-use building that ranges from four to six floors across it. And what you have here is the existing condition photos, and what we have within the existing conditions is an auto body shop and three pretty rundown residential buildings. Two are three families, and one is a one-family, for a total of seven units. I would just point out here that the MBTA orange line runs directly behind the proposed project and is our abutting property owner, the MBTA land and the MBTA right-of-way and the tracks. Next slide, please. This is just a plot plan here that, that shows that the, the red bubbles here show cornices and balconies that overhang onto the public way, including those that are on the back there, you know, on the, over the MBTA-owned property. But significant here is the sidewalk, which was pulled back. Terrace Street, for those who know in Mission Hill, is a very narrow sidewalk. It's about eight and a half feet, I'm sorry, it's about six feet wide today. This project is going to make it now an eight and a half-foot sidewalk, and that will allow us to plant trees. There are nine new trees that will now be street trees on this project, and to allow for a complete streets, a complete sidewalk accessibility, so full passage and, and the street trees, and lots of accessibility now by deeding two feet of, of, or by providing easement, if you will, two, two feet to the sidewalk. We're also, where that triangular cutout you see there, going to place a blue bikes station completely on our property. So people from all over the neighborhood, including the project, will be able to access those blue bikes. Next slide, please. So this slide here shows the thirty-two parking spaces that are, you know, below ground under the building. It shows the loading zone on the corner, rear corner of the building. It shows the blue bike station in position. It shows the vehicle entrance there on the rightmost corner of the building to access the underground garage. In the rear, it shows a proposed emergency easement for fire access to allow for emergency access along there. Next slide, please. So this, this slide is the, is a rendering of the, the, a rendering. It shows you the side elevation, and it shows the rear elevation at the bottom. The red there, and then Doug Anderson will get into this a little bit, but the red signifies is why we were cited for building code. Anytime you have windows on a property line, it creates, it's a building code violation. In this case, the property line abuts the orange line right-of-way. And so, you know, nothing's ever going to get built there, but it doesn't matter, we still get cited for the building code. That's why we're bringing this to you. As you know, the CBA has the ability to make those decisions. Next slide, please. So this slide just is, you know, more detailed basement floor plan. Lots of bicycle parking, you'll see. There's eighty interior spaces, sixteen exterior post-spaces, but then there's also that blue bike station that I mentioned earlier. Next slide, please. And this is now, we're just starting the floor plans. This is the first floor plan. I'll just point out to you in the corner, on the corner of Cedar and Terrace Street, that's eighteen hundred and thirty-four square feet of ground floor retail that will be made available as well. And the next slide, it starts to build the, the floor plans, and it's probably a good time for me to tell you what we have for the units in the building. There are nine micro-units. So those micro-units are those small units that require separate common space elsewhere in the building. So we have another almost four thousand square feet of common space that I'll show you as we get around. Those micro-units are three hundred and fifty square feet, plus or minus. There are two studios in this entire project of seventy-nine units. Those are around four hundred and eighty square feet. There are twenty-four one-bedrooms that are around six hundred and sixty-two. There are thirty-seven two-bedroom, and nine of those thirty-seven bedrooms are duplexes, and those range from eight hundred and ninety-one square feet to nine hundred and forty-one square feet. And then finally, there are seven three-bedroom units, and those are, and four of those are duplexes, and they range from eleven fifty-six to thirteen fifty-nine, thirteen fifty-nine. So the next slide is going to kind of build these, these floor plans. Slide nine, slide ten kind of shows you. At slide eleven, the next slide, you'll start to see how the building itself tapers. One more slide, Madam Ambassador. Oh, one more slide. Yeah, there you go. So here, you'll see how the building, oh, one more, the other way, please. Yep, there you go. You'll see how the building itself tapers, just, and that, that L common deck that's on the right, and then on the left, there's another deck that faces the city of Boston. So that, that's kind of giving you a sense of how the building starts to taper as it gets to the top, and then if you get to the, the next, the next slide, which would be the sixth floor, here, you'll see those tops of those duplex units I talked to you about, as well as the upper mezzanine of the community room, and some of that outdoor space is dedicated towards the, the contribution towards the micro-units as well. If you go to the next slide, it will show you the, just the roof plan, but it's a good place to just kind of point out that we have a photo with tail panels, that this is a LEED gold certifiable project, that we are pursuing passive house standards, and that these are EPOSive Energy Home requirements that we're putting forward as a part of this project. The next slide will show you just the rendering of the building and one of the sides, and also the front elevation. We have a better rendering coming, so I'll go to the next slide, which shows you kind of the inverse. If you go to the next slide, it shows you the rear rendering of the building, the other side of this building, and the back of the building. And then the next slide shows you a section of the building. The next slide is also a section, but I'd point out that it kind of here, we show that there's a separate kind of access corridor that we're providing to the MBTA for future maintenance of the existing block granite wall that is presently on the site. So if they have to maintain that wall or get in there for any reason, we're basically providing them a little corridor that they can always use to, to access that wall. So something that they requested. The next slide, please, both slides eighteen and nineteen, we have a blow-up on nineteen of, of the zoning relief we're seeking, so I can just quickly walk you through that. So the use, this is in a local industrial district, in the Mission Hill neighborhood zoning district. So as a local industrial, multifamily housing is a, is a forbidden use, so there's a variance for that. Any retail that's over a thousand square feet, ours is over eighteen hundred square feet, requires a conditional use permit, so we were cited for that. FAR for this area of the city is two-point-oh, and we're at four-point-six-eight-five, which is actually similar to other projects that are appearing on Terrace Street. The building height for this area is forty feet, and we are seeking a sixty-nine-eleven-foot building, which again is, has similarities to some of the other buildings on the street that are recently developed. The usable open space was cited, but we have more than exceeded the usable open space, so it shouldn't have been cited. We're at six thousand, and it requires thirty-nine fifty. And the rear yard was cited correctly. As I mentioned, we're directly on that rear yard along the MBTA. And a part of the pulling back of the building and creating the larger sidewalk led to how we also got right on the property line as well, which is a good segue, if you want, Madam Chair, for Doug Anderson, who's our code consultant, to explain the building code part of this, if that's okay with you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Doug, are you there?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. As you can see, it's a fairly shallow lot when you're in Terrace Street, so to get a building designed like a typical apartment with central corridor with units on each side, there really kind of wasn't a whole lot of choice, other than to go back to the rear property line, as Michael had said. The issues introduced by the building code, as cited by ISD, are two. One is that those particular, on the MBTA property line, face, A, the southwest corridor, of course, as was mentioned, but B, they also face towards the south, and so it's the sunny side of the building. And the fire department access that Michael spoke of earlier is a ten-foot be-paved strip, not for fire truck access, but for firefighter access. I understand discussions have been held with the fire department, and they're totally okay with it. The intent is to seek an access, access arrangement with the MBTA, who allow them, allow fire, you know, allow the fire department to use that paved area, too soon-to-be paved area, for firefighter activities if they need it. It will be gated and locked, and the lock will be provided with a key that the fire department typically carries with them, so it's, it's, nothing unusual, there's, there's a number of these, it seems, along the southwest corridor. The windows on the lot line, of course, are required by the voluntary code and the building code. If we can go to the rear elevation of the building, it was, it was towards one of the latest, actually, in the top-left corner.
The next slide actually will show you a nice little last slide.
Yeah, three-D rendering. If we could zoom in on that. Keep going.
No, that's, that's the one that you want.
Yeah, okay, that one, right there. So as, as was mentioned, there's a, there's a three-foot-thick granite block wall that is owned by the MBTA. It probably dates back to the eighteen hundreds, when, when the right-of-way was first built for the railroads. And so the ten-foot paved portion is the equivalent of a public way of thirteen feet of width, and a public way is defined, in, in the building code, as a street, alley, or other parcel of land open to the outside air, leading to a street that has been de-dedicated or otherwise permanently appropriated to the public use. And even though this is not open to the public, it is owned by the MBTA, so we are certainly meeting the intent of a public way under the provisions of the building code, and if we measure the fire separation distance from the face of the building to the center of the de facto public way, six and a half feet, which allows twenty-five percent openings per story, and that is exactly what we're providing. So we are certainly meeting the intent of the building code. There is no hazard of presented of spread of fire to adjacent buildings, because there aren't going to be any adjacent buildings on this, and the, so it's a buffer of sorts between the, the trench that is the southwest corridor and the buildings along the right-of-way. The second-
Thank you. Could I, could I just open it up to questions from the board as well, just to see if they have any, so we can keep going forward? Any questions from the board?
I, I have a, kind of a practicality question in regards to if there is a potential fire, how, how is there going to be access to fire trucks to the rear of the building?
Question, the build, the fire code requires that a fire truck only get within fifty feet of a building entrance, and all locations around the perimeter of a building have to be within two hundred and fifty feet of travel. And so this building is around forty feet in length, which is why this access is required. Not required for the fire truck, but it is required for firefighter access for regular operations, and that is what is in the state fire code that was adopted on December twenty-second, and that's what we're meeting. I'm just going to add here.
Yeah, so you meet the length in terms of bringing fire hose. What about to the top of the building?
Well, that would be, that would be operations from inside, I would, I would presume.
Okay, but you do meet the less than a hundred feet length, correct? You said it's-
Less than two-fifty, yeah. We're under the two, we're under the two-fifty, yeah. Yeah, and we're certainly within fifty feet of, of, and entrance, not all entrances, but and entrance into the building. And I believe, Nick, correct me, I think, are we putting a, a hose connection at the corner?
We are. My name is Nick Elton from Westbrook Architects. We're the architects on the project. There is an entrance within, there is an entrance within twenty feet. Can we keep that, that, there is a main entrance, as you've seen, but there is an entrance just next to the loading dock into this building, which is a, a, a common and public entrance. We are putting in a, a new fire hydrant right at that access point. We are putting in a gate that meets the MBTA requirements. We are providing, as Doug mentioned, a ten-foot access agreement area that will be paved and maintained by the developer, and we have met with the fire commissioner, and they have reviewed this, and they have indicated that the length of this building is two hundred and twenty-three feet long, and the, the limit is two fifty. They have felt that they can use their boom trucks at that length to fight, to do the exterior fighting above ground, and that, that they're only seeking an access agreement for, for human personnel to be able to walk onto that side of the property.
Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, do we receive any BPDA review recommendations or comments?
No.
No, okay. Has the applicant been undergoing BPDA design review?
Yeah, Madam Chair, we went through an extent, and Mrs. Bede Brazza, we went through an extensive community process, through the BPDA, large project review process, with an approval by their board in November. The thing I didn't mention to you earlier, which reminded me of, is that this also has an eighteen percent IDP component attached to it as well for affordable housing.
Seventy percent.
Seventeen point-
Seventy and something, right?
Seventeen point- 17.7, sorry, approximately 18%. I rounded up, fair, fair. 17.7% IDP, correct. It was supported by the Mission Hill Neighborhood Housing Services, you know, CDC, which is the longest-standing affordable housing group in Mission Hill. We have a letter that we have provided.
At least we have that letter, yes. Any other questions?
Yeah, sure. What do you lose by bringing in the rear elevation by three feet in terms of your internal units?
If I may, I can respond to that. Right now, we are at, in the typical width, we're at 56 feet, so frankly, losing three feet would be fairly critical to the whole design of the building, and we would lose a considerable amount. The normal preferred amount for the width of a double-loaded corridor like this is 60 feet. And we already, as Michael mentioned before, we have a six-foot sidewalk on the other side, and we came back two and a half feet on that side. So this candidly would be fairly critical for the operation of the building, and the MBTA, you know, has indicated a willingness, we're just in the process of, frankly, it's a financial issue of doing negotiations on this. We've met with them four times, so they're not against this idea, and there are precedents of other buildings on this block having similar arrangements.
That they sit on the property line?
Yes, they sit on the property line, yeah.
Okay, no further questions?
In fact, they bridge over the stone wall. They're older buildings, but they were renovated to housing about eight years ago, the Pickle Factory, which is just down the street.
A quick question, Madam Chair. Mr. Ross, is the MBTA asking you for your project to do anything with the trees on the MBTA basement, or not?
Can I...
Remove the trees or plant new trees?
Can I jump into that?
Of course.
So part of the negotiation that seems to be ongoing is that the MBTA does want us to do some overall clearing and replanting of portions of this, because right now, somewhat the way it's represented in this image, it's just wild back there. I mean, it's difficult to navigate through there, and that is part of what they're doing in the negotiation, to ask that there be some clearing and replanting in a way that, because there's a huge number of atlantas, this guy has like an atlanta's grove back there, that is, you can't, it's very difficult to even walk through it. This is a maintenance area, and right now they're fighting, and what they like to do is to store certain materials there that they're doing in the ongoing maintenance, and they cannot do it. Whereas on the north side, which is the other side of Terrace Street, they have cleared it out, and they are able to do maintenance and store materials there, and they do have a gate similar to what we're proposing. So they are actually interested and anxious to get this to work in that way for them.
Okay, so just a recommendation for you and your team to invite your state senator and state representative to a conversations with the MBTA, to ensure that there is consistency on the management for the trees along the orange line corridor, to ensure that there is sustainability and there are more trees planted than the trees that are removed.
You can do that, Mr. Valencia. We are still in conversations with the MBTA, so we'll raise that with them. One final point for you, I'll also move to grab to the housing makeup and the affordable housing. There is a very extensive agreement between the proponent and the Mission Hill Neighborhood Housing Services. As you know, Mission Hill has many student housing concerns about places that become kind of de facto dormitory, so it was important to the community that this wasn't just going to be some sort of student housing and all the other units of the 82%, you know, 83% that were there. So they entered into an agreement that has auditing and has counts and has all sorts of benchmarks with Mission Hill Neighborhood Housing Services to make sure that that doesn't happen. I just want to make sure I point that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, there is the second building code issue that we need to address, and that is section 3202, which has to do with projections over a public way. If you can see on this rear elevation, there are sunshades over the larger windows that will allow sunlight to stream indirectly in the wintertime, and in the summertime it will block. I imagine this is part of the overall efficiency design behind the reason those are there, but certainly not my area of expertise. But they do project over the property line, and the citation that ISD noted was project the public way. Technically, the building code does not address projections over property line, but that being said, if we look at this as analogous to a public way, it would be allowed over, I think, over 15 feet, allowed projection. As noted, this walkway is used only for firefighters on foot, it is not used for vehicular traffic whatsoever, and the lowest shade is 12 feet to 13 feet above the wall. Everything else is well above the 15 feet, that being the magic number above which there's no limitation to projections over the public way. So again, we're certainly meeting the intent of the code, if not exactly the letter of it, by having these sunshades project over the property line.
Thank you.
May I interject in here? I'm sorry, again, this is Nick Elton, the architect on the project. The sunshades are critical for the summer overheating, but obviously, we are projecting over in a butter's property. So in the access agreement that we are working on with the MBTA, they have also indicated a tacit agreement to allowing us to do this, because it doesn't project beyond their existing stone wall that separates the two properties, which is three foot thick. And that is part of the legal arrangement that's currently being negotiated and is expected. But if for some reason that portion of it were not successful, we would eliminate it, but I think it would hurt the performance reference to air conditioning use during the summer.
All right, thank you. With that, may I have public testimony?
Yes, hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Maggie Van Squire from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, we'd like to defer to the judgment of this board. This project went through a thorough Article 80 community process with the BPDA. During that process, our office was made aware of comments in support of the project from people in the area believing it was a good project in design. We are aware of a few comments stated worried about this building being too large and too dense for the area. As mentioned, the Mission Hill Neighborhood Housing Services issued a letter of support in support of this project, and with that, we'd like to defer to the judgment of this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? Yeah, Anthony Fies, Councilor Bock's office. Anthony?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, yes, my name is Anthony. I'm the Mission Hill liaison for Councilor Bock, and she just wanted me to lead a quick comment on the proposal. Terrace Street is transitioning from a light industrial use to a mixed residential-commercial district. Projects like this proposal are contributing to that change to a more complete street. I am pleased to see this proposal go above and beyond the IDP requirements to provide much-needed additional affordable housing. They have worked with the community to ensure long-term tenants occupy these units, and of course, have contributed to the transportation study of Terrace Street. For these reasons, Councilor Bock would urge the board to approve the proposal before them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Madam Chair, I do have Adam. Adam, you've been unmuted, if you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Adam Sarbaugh, Mission Hill resident, Nine Ogwald Street, board member of Mission Hill Neighborhood Housing Services. As everyone has pointed out, our board has submitted a letter of support on April 10th, pointing out that the 17.7% affordable in the building, as well as the signed MLA with the board, that does restrict the number of undergrad resident students in the project, and a contribution to the Terrace Street transportation study, as everyone has pointed out, the Terrace Street is a very narrow street undergoing drastic development at the time. Also wanted to point out that while these are rental units, we are in support, the developer came through last month with 47 homeownership units on Terrace Street that also have an affordable component above that as well. So with all that said, we are on record of support. Thanks.
And Minor?
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, minor parrot representing the carpenters union. On behalf of Congress of Union Carpenters, the Labor and Work Board of Boston, want a board record of support of this project.
Thank you. No additional raised hands. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the project.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Sorry to interrupt. I do have a carer that just came in.
We're in the middle of a vote.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr., okay, now I lost my train, Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Did I skip over you, Mr. Shepherd?
No, you did not.
Sorry. The chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Madam Chair, the motion is just to approve the project, but do we need to do a motion for building code relief?
That was my question.
Because that's two different, that's two different motions.
Typically, it's a separate motion, yeah?
Yep.
Good question, go for it.
So, Madam Chair, I make a motion to not give a building code relief for the project. It has to be worked out with BPDA.
So just for us...
That's my motion.
Okay.
So there's two building code relief requests. One was for the projection, and the other one was for the rear, rear windows not being on the property line.
Madam Chair, if I could just discuss that motion for a second?
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, just very briefly. This won't be worked out with the BPDA. This will require us to go to the state, and we are, obviously, that would be our only recourse, but it would take months to do that. Now, if we did do that, we would certainly not want to appear with a negative kind of vote from the board, you know, if that's an option, to know if you're going to deny it, I would ask that you don't, you know, you don't deny it, you just maybe we withdraw it or something, but I would hope that you would consider passing it, so we don't have to delay the project by an additional three months.
Well, that's, Ms. Bede Barazza, that's your motion. Do you have any additional thoughts on it?
This is a zoning board. We don't have the recommendation at all, even of the BPDA. That was not submitted to us. So I do think it's a great project, so on those grounds, I was in agreement with the board, but in terms of a, in terms of a zoning board providing relief for the two that were in front of us, I would maintain my motion that there's no building code relief.
Madam Chair, may I speak?
Very briefly.
Yes, it is the City of Boston Board of Appeal. It is not limited to just zoning cases. The Board of Appeal's authority to grant building code relief predates by decades the implementation of a statewide building code in 1995. I've had many projects where I've had to dive into the 1944 building code, the 1921 building law, to try to reverse engineer stuff. This board has always had the authority to grant relief from the building code at the time, and that got transferred over to the Board, City of Boston Board of Appeal, when the state building code became effective in 1975. So the board certainly has the authority to grant building code relief. We came to this board for this because we felt that the building code issues introduced do not introduce any life safety hazards whatsoever to the occupants of the building, nor to any of others, because there's no others, all of our trees. And it's an MBTA right-of-way that's been in existence for probably over 150 years. So, and nothing's going to be built on that piece of property that may store, but again, it's a good distance away from the building. So there is no life safety hazard whatsoever to occupants of this building by allowing those openings.
Thank you. Well, I have a motion, so either there's a second or there's not. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
No.
Ms. Weewell?
No.
Mr. Valencia?
No.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
The chair also votes no, the motion does not carry. Okay. Javier, do we need an alternate motion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if you would like to put another motion for a D-Walk, you may do so. If not, it could be a straight denial on that specific motion for no building code relief.
Those are our options?
Yes, since the motion did not carry for that specific one.
I think the motion was to deny, so I think we would be making a motion to approve or grant the building code relief, is that right?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, Javier. Wouldn't that be an alternate motion?
Yes, yes, that would be the alternate motion, yeah.
Okay, so anyone want to put forth a new motion?
We'll make the motion to approve or grant the building code relief for the reasons stated by the applicant about any MBTA right-of-way.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
No.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
No.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, at this time, I'll go to the 1:00 PM hearings and ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals.
All right, hearing none, let's keep going.
Hearing none, we move on to, it wasn't there, if I see my correct place here. We move on to 2028 Cheney Street.
Madam Chair, I have to recuse myself from this case.
Okay, thank you.
Case being BOA, case being BOA 1436479, with the address of 20 to 28 Cheney Street, and this is a Article 80 project.
Madam Chair, this is Javier. As it's not a full-member board, we have to recommend an administrative, oh, I'm sorry, offer administrative parole if they request one.
I thought administrative was only if it was five.
No, it's not a full-member board.
Okay, well, does the applicant want to take an administrative deferral?
Thank you, Madam Chair, but we would like to proceed.
Please do.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Rebecca Plout-Moutner, and I'm the Director of Real Estate for the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Development Corporation. Next slide, please. As some of you may know, the Jamaica Plain NDC is a community development corporation. We're rooted in Jamaica Plain, but work across the city in Jamaica Plain, Roxbury, and Dorchester. And we create affordable housing, such as this project. We have economic prosperity services that help people build on their strengths, start and grow small businesses, support family childcare providers, and it looks like our architect is looking for access, and work with building contractors of color, and we also do community organizing. Our mission is to transform the lives and amplify the voices of Boston residents who have been excluded from prosperity by an inequitable economic system. Next slide, please. 2028 Cheney Street is an affordable homeownership project, so it advances, has come out of an extensive community process. It reflects our values of community engagement, extensive input from neighbors, the creation of affordable housing, and homeownership in particular, to reflect the desires of the immediate community and provide opportunities for... community and provide opportunities for people, families to build their prosperity. 2028 Cheney, uh, is part of three sites the JP NDC acquired a little more than four years ago. Um, Three Skyler Street is a, um, six-unit, uh, affordable housing homeownership project that received zoning relief last year, uh, actually late in 2021. And this site and the one adjacent to it, 418 Cheney, which will be, um, 48 units of senior rental housing, um, received relief in an earlier incarnation of this project in March of 2022. We received approval from the ZBA, but following that approval, um, had significant input from neighbors who requested that we change the design. The rental project, we reduced the number of units and came back for relief through the board final arbiter process several months ago. On this project, we had thought we could go through board final arbiter, but there were some changes made at the request of the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association of Project Right and the city's, the Mayor's Office of Housing regarding location of parking, which then created the need for a couple of, uh, additional variances, which is why we are here before you with a full appeal application. So our site will create six units of affordable home ownership. Uh, previous slide, please. Um, this does reflect 25 community meetings we've had. Yes, thank you for moving on. Appreciate it. Um, the next chart will show the changes since our last approval. Um, we have one-for-one parking. It had been located previously under the adjacent rental building and is now on-site. That has pushed the building forward and necessitated a couple of additional variances. We've located the parking entrance on Hartwell as opposed to Cheney, and we reduced the number of units from nine units to six units. Um, as, and as you can see at the chart at the bottom, we've basically reduced the density and, in most cases, reduced that zoning relief we are requesting. Um, next slide, and I will turn it over to our Andres. Um, are you on and able to talk, architect?
Yes, yes, I am.
Super.
Okay, thank you.
I'll turn it over to Andres.
Excellent. Um, good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Andres Bernal. I am an architect with JGE. Uh, what you see in this, uh, slide is, is, is the sightline as it stands right now. See Cheney going, uh, left to right on top, uh, Cheney Street, and then Hartwell Street, uh, top to bottom on the left of the slide. Um, this, uh, the main difference, uh, from this proposal to the previous proposal, if you can stay on that slide, is, uh, there are two main differences. One is that the, the building volume moved towards Cheney Street, and two is that the two, uh, the, the, the six parking spaces that Rebecca mentioned are now located, uh, in the back of the building. As Rebecca mentioned, also, we have six units in, in this, uh, in this proposal. Two of those units are flat and are accessed, uh, from Cheney, they're flat units. These, uh, these are accessible units that have also access to the, uh, accessible parking spaces in the back. The remainder of four units are accessed, uh, from the two other entries and are duplex units that you would, uh, residents would enter, go up, uh, and, uh, access their units, units on the second and third floor. Um, next slide, please. Altogether, we have, uh, eight violations. Uh, for, uh, what you see here on the screen are six, uh, that we, uh, have been previously granted in the previous, uh, proposal. Um, and, uh, if you go to the next slide, um, we see the, this are, uh, the two additional reliefs that we're, we're requesting here. One is the tra- traffic visibility at Cross Corner. This one is a product of, um, moving the building towards Cheney Street, which was again, uh, a request, uh, from the community. And then the second one, front yard insufficient, uh, which we had actually been, we requested that previously to. Now, um, it's, it's worth mentioning on the front yard that the two existing buildings that are on Cheney Street are right on the property line, so that would give us essentially a zero, um, uh, model. However, we did not provide the, the calculations in our submission to ISD. And I think with that, uh, the, that completes our presentation.
Thank you. That, are there any questions from the board? Hearing none? Uh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Bede.
No questions.
Okay. Uh, may I have public testimony?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Keisha Santana with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Um, in a butters meeting was held, and after working with community wants and needs, the applicants were able to receive 102 nearby and direct butters, uh, where those residents provided signatures of support. They met with Garrison Trotter and Project Right, where they came to an agreement to reduce the amount of units, um, for community support as long as increase the affordable homeownership aspect. Um, Project Right has submitted a letter of support and want continued community engagement with any impacts, um, to a butters during construction, um, and just overall continued community engagement. Um, and at this time, we would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Francis, do you want to?
Keep going.
Yes. Lynn, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Lynn Whipple, um, although I live in Millet, I have been the property manager. Did I, did I stop? I've been the property manager at Sonoma Maple Skyler Apartments for more than 20 years. Is, is somebody else talking?
Please proceed.
I'm sorry. Um, I was confused. I'm technologically impaired, I'm sorry. Um, and I've been involved with the Jamaica Plain NDC for nearly 40 years now, and have been to many of the 25 public meetings that, that have been held, and am very much in support of this project. There are so many elderly people that need help, and my main focus was obviously on the, um, on the elderly project, the larger project, but I think that the JP NDC has bent over backwards to reduce the number of units in the Cheney Street, um, homeownership program, and to add parking, because the main issues that people had were density and parking. And I think that they have done an excellent job of, of pulling it all together to come to a, a plan that everybody seems to be happy with.
Thank you. Special services?
Hi, my name is Lorraine Payne Wheeler.
Hi, Erin. Um, can I actually give you a call back? I'm covering ZBA. Sorry, Lorraine, go ahead.
My name is Lorraine Payne Wheeler, and I'm representing City Councilor Tanya Anderson. Uh, Tanya, um, gives her support, uh, to this project because it's adding homeownership to an area that really needs affordable opportunities for residents. And so, um, she gives her enthusiastic support to this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Councilor, Michael Flaherty, those who have a record of support.
We have Samantha. You've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Samantha Montano. I'm the state rep for the 15th Suffolk, and I'm just going on record, uh, as in support of this project.
Thank you. Roy Thompson, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Roy Thompson. I live at 14 Wambach Street. Uh, I'm, I'm the Chair of the Housing Committee for the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association. We've attended several meetings with JP NDC, and they've accommodated some input from the butters in the neighborhood. Essentially, um, we'd love to have more affordable ownership units, but because Cheney Street is a very narrow one-way street in a, in a neighborhood, it had to be reduced to six. But this site brings six affordable purchasing units to the locate, to the neighborhood, which is very important. And the onsite parking is important as well. Anyone who's, for me, with Cheney Street knows that it is very dense and there's almost no street parking available. So it was important for the, the butters and the neighborhood association to, uh, to work with JP NDC to right-size the development to the accommodating of the current situation neighborhood. But we are, we are in support and appreciate JP NDC working with the various neighborhood associations and the butters and, uh, neighbors who live in the community. So we're in support.
Thank you. Can, can folks build on what other folks say and add something new, please? Thank you. Francis?
Um, Lorraine?
You already went.
Okay.
Lower your hand.
Yeah, all the attendees have gone. So Minor, Cindy?
Yes. Hello, um, Madam Chair, members of the board. Um, simply due to this from the office of Councilor, we would like to vote in support, um, of the project.
Thank you. I see Ms. Boyd?
Thanks so much, Solidad Boyd. I live at Four Nazin Court, uh, in Grove Hall, about a five-minute walk from the Cheney Street address. I, uh, come here today in support of the project. I, um, feel like the, uh, Nazin Court's, um, relationship with JP NDC goes back actually 20 years this month, when organizers from JP NDC stood in solidarity with folks from Nazin Court to, uh, preserve our affordability. And so I am happy to support this project 20 years later, uh, where the NDC is bringing even more affordability to Grove Hall, which is greatly needed for both folks who want to remain there as homeowners and folks who are reaching retirement age like myself, who want to make sure that we have an opportunity to stay in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is President and I represent the Carpenter's Union. On behalf of our Boston residents, we want to go on record in support. And I would say kudos to Rebecca and the team at JP NDC for great community outreach.
Okay, how many more raised hands do we have? Can we, I, I think we got a, we, we got the idea.
Good afternoon. My name is Tierra Satchel, and I'm a housing development officer with the Mayor's Office of Housing. Uh, and I just want to say, I go what everybody says and say that this project has full and mutual support.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tommy in Council Murphy's office. Uh, Council Murphy wants to go on record in support as well. Thank you.
Okay, with that, can I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review. And I just want to also comment that the 149-plus letters of support was commendable.
Agreed. Uh, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
If he were to use himself.
Oh, sorry, use himself, sorry. Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Madam Chair, I will recuse myself from the next project, 800 Boulevard.
Thank you.
So the next project is case number, case number BOA 1433779 with the address of 800 William T. Morrissey Boulevard, which is also an Article 80 project. It is the applicant for the representative present.
Yes, um, good afternoon. Um, thank you, uh, Clerk Stenbridge and Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's Matt Lawler with the Law Firm of Robinson &amp; Cole. Business address of One Boston Place, Boston 02108, speaking on behalf of the applicant. I'm also joined by Jeff Lewis and Jay Russo from the Project Developer at Dorchester 2 Michaels, uh, as well as the project architect, Brian O'Connor from Cube 3, and Emily Anderson from Bowler, who are the project engineers. Very briefly described and showing the plans, this appeal relates to the property located at 800 Morrissey Boulevard in Dorchester. Uh, the developer is proposing to demolish the existing hotel building and replace it with a new building of just under 200,000 square feet in gross floor area with 229 residential apartments. Following a lengthy public review process that started in July of 2021, the BCDC voted to grant approval on November 1st, 2022, and the BPDA board granted Article 80B, Large, Large Project Review Approval at its meeting on December 15th, 2022, and then voted to recommend approval of this request for zoning relief at its meeting last month on March 16th, 2023. So at this point, I think we, you can leave the slides there. Um, I'll have Brian O'Connor from Cube 3 review the project's design program, and then he'll turn it back to me at the end to review the zoning relief that's being requested pursuant to this appeal. So, Brian, you are up.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. If you can move to the next slide. I'm going to walk you through very quickly some of the building plans here. Uh, we're looking at the ground floor plan to orient everyone. Route 93 is running horizontally across the top of the page, and Morrissey Boulevard is right along the bottom. Uh, at the ground floor of this building, we've, we've spent quite a bit of time paying attention to the, the differing edges and public realm. Along the bottom edge of the building plans, we have a large amenity space that fronts on Morrissey Boulevard, uh, with a main entry on the right-hand side. On the left-hand edge, we share a, a very, um, interesting path with 780 Morrissey adjacent that allows both bikes and pedestrians to access. So what way, uh, along the top edge of the page south of 93, along this pathway, we've located both bike lounge, uh, bike storage and units. Um, and then we have about 154 parking spaces in the, in the garage itself, in the deck with 88-end stackers. On the next slide, we're moving up to the, the level above this. We have a large amenity courtyard with southern exposure in the center of the building, uh, framed by residential units, uh, all the way around, as well as an amenity space on the backside of the leg adjacent to Marty, Morrissey. On the next, you can also see on the left-hand edge of this slide, a fairly large step-back deck position, uh, fronting on that connector pathway for the units at this level. As we move up to the next level, you can see typical floors three through five on the next slide. Uh, and again, this project is a mix of studios one, two, and three-bed with a total of 229 units. In the next slide, you can see the Sky Lounge, which happens in the upper-left corner, facing both the water and north towards Boston, uh, with views of the skyline. Here, you can also see the lower leg of the building is roofed now in the sixth-floor plan, as we have a five-story volume against Morrissey Boulevard. In the next slide, the elevations, uh, the top elevation here is actually the elevation that runs, uh, along the Route 93 edge. So the large sort of blank area on the lower left has been reserved for artists, and we're going to be proposing, uh, a, a very significant art wall there adjacent to the public walking path. On the right-hand side, you can see the deck areas and the sort of step-back of the building adjacent to the path. The lower elevation, uh, is actually fronting on Morrissey Boulevard. Here, you can see that lower leg to the front is five stories with the balance of the building being six. On the next page, we have the two side elevations. The top elevation on the next page is adjacent to the bike path. Uh, here you can see that long contiguous deck area, uh, with unit, uh, balconies above the first floor, the two lower units, bike storage and bike lounge areas on either ends of this elevation. The bottom elevation actually shows the main entry in the lower left. You can see the lower volume against Morrissey Boulevard. You can also see the primary garage entry here. The next slide, the next two slides are actually a series of perspectives. The first is a view across Morrissey Boulevard, so Route 93 is on the opposite side. Uh, here you can see that the very active ground floor, uh, very, um, public transparent space, two very simple, very clean building volumes. And again, we have a five and a six-story split between this building, uh, building volumes. To the left is the recently approved and under construction 780 Morrissey Building. In the next view, we're looking from the Route 93 side down the corridor between these two buildings, which is really a multimodal mixed-use path connecting to the, um, MBTA path that runs along the edge of the highway. Here you can see, uh, that deck area that I was talking about, large glassy areas, transparent bike lounge and direct access, uh, as well as a very well-developed path network between these buildings, connecting also to the bike lounge at the lower level on the adjacent abutment project on the right-hand side. And then I think the next slide, we're going to go back to Mr. Wall.
Great, yes, if you could advance, yep, that's great. Um, so just to review the zoning relief, the property is located in the Community Commercial Sub District of the Dorchester Neighborhood District. That was adopted by Article 65 of the zoning code, and as identified in, in the notice, the proposed project requires zoning relief in a, of a couple of kinds, a couple of conditional use permits, and then some dimensional variances. So as far as the conditional use permits go, it's with respect to the location of the property in a green belt protection overlay district, that's related to Morrissey Boulevard, and then the multifamily residential use here is a conditional use in the Community Commercial Sub District. Um, the project also requires dimensional, uh, variances with respect to floor-to-air ratio, as noted on the table. It's 2.24. on the table. It's 2.24 as opposed to the 2.0 limit. The building height here is 70 feet as opposed to the 45-foot limit. The minimum rear setback is 12 feet as opposed to 20 feet. So those are sort of the straight dimensional variances. Then we had a couple of variances with respect to parking that I think fall into the same sort of category as dimensional. With respect to the use of stackers in this building, that was cited as a potential maneuverability issue. And then finally, the dimensions of the space, as is shown on the table, are below the dimensions that will be required by Article 65. So that's a summary of the citations that we received and the request for zoning relief. I think what I'll do is I'll stop there, and we can take questions from the board. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any questions from the board?
Do you have comments from Bob D'Amico?
Okay, can you share them?
The first is that BTD would like to have the traffic and parking consultant explain how the stacker system will operate. It requires more detail regarding this issue. Next is access and egress opening should be a minimum of 20 feet in width to allow for safe operations. The third is that 50% of the spaces should be 20 feet by eight-and-a-half feet, while the remainder of the spaces will be, must be 7 feet by 18 feet. And finally, 25% of the spaces must be electric charging, electric charging ready, while the remainder of these spaces, 75%, must have the infrastructure in place for future use as an electric charging parking space. That's what he wrote.
Thank you. Do you want to address those before we move on?
Yeah, I don't know, Jay or Jeff or Emily, do you want to respond?
Jay Russo, Eleven Lantern Lane, West Roxbury, the developer. I would tell you, as far as the stackers question, we're in the process of working with a company, right, yeah, jar of blank on the stacker company, they're out of Dorchester. We, we understand, I guess I have a couple of questions for Bob, but he's obviously not on the call. I'm not quite sure, everything was designed, I guess, to meet the standards. So I'm a little confused on what it is he's asking for.
I think, I mean, one of the, the one that he was commenting on is he's asking for 50% of the parking spaces to be regular size versus compact. What percentage of your parking is compact versus regular spaces?
Brian, do you have that in front of you?
Yeah, I'm doing, I don't, Jay, I'm doing some quick math. It looks like we have 16 compact, so 16 divided by...
Okay, 16 compact, and how many total parking spaces you have?
159, so it looks like about...
10%.
10%.
But I mean, generally, it's desirable to be larger than compact, but, but it seems like we can easily add a proviso for the, it to be BTD review without getting into the specifics of the project.
Yes. Any other questions on the proposal? Okay, Karen Dunn, can I take public testimony?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ross Cochran with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed their community process. The BPDA held a butters meetings regarding this project where concerns over traffic, parking, and size were brought up. The developers have met with the local civic groups regarding the project, but no official stance has been taken by the local civic group. At this time, we'd like to defer to the board's judgment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frances, do you want to? Yes. Henry, you've been unmuted. You can state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Henry Westman. I live at 92 Train Street in Dorchester. I'm an executive board member of the Pope Hill Neighborhood Association, a mass-licensed architect, and was an IAG member for the Article 80 Large Project Review for this proposal. My comments, I've discussed with the president of the Pope Hill Neighborhood Association, John Schneiderman, and he's on board with what I'm saying. The first comment that I'd like to make is regarding the Community Commercial District. Those were specifically defined in the code to create a diversified commercial environment that serves a larger market, that are intended to encourage the development of neighborhood businesses. The problem that we're having with this is that this is a conditional use, but when that's combined with the recent approval of 780, which is under construction, the recent approval by the BPDA of 13 Norwood Street for another 52 units, and the proposal for the alterations to the Comfort Inn, all to a residential use, usage, it's basically perverting the whole idea of the Community Commercial District in which it lies. And furthermore, those proposals will eliminate both of the only hotels in the immediate vicinity of the area, which serve specifically that function of the CC Community Commercial District. I brought these comments up at the, at the, at the BPDA hearings, and they fell on deaf ears. This can't be looked narrowly at only this project, because there's repeated allowances for these residential uses in a special area of Dorchester. The, the next thing that I'd like to address with the board is the parking. The PMF said that there would be 145 spaces and five additional spaces that were on the site, and I understand that they changed those. But the issue here is that there's 230 units in this place, and not just single bedrooms, but there are two bedrooms and three bedrooms, and there's simply not enough parking. And when you combine that with 780, it all pours out on the streets, and there's been no accountability of this. The next issue that I'd like to address is Section 7-3 of the, of the code.
Ray, please, please wrap up. We have a lot of other raised hands.
Excuse me?
Can you please wrap up with your last point? Thank you.
I didn't say this was my last point.
We have, we have a lot of other hands raised, so I just want to make sure we get to everyone.
Okay, well, then I'll just conclude on 7-3, which is paragraph 80, paragraph A, I'm sorry, the interruption threw me off guards, is that there's no, there's no basis for paragraph A or paragraph B of Section 7-3. There's an existing motel, hotel there already, the Ramada Inn, they're going to demolish it, and this is a self-created hardship. The courts have ruled many times that a self-created hardship is not a basis for a variance. More simply put, they simply could have made this building a little bit smaller, not have the floor area violation, and they do not have to have the 70 feet of height, which is 25 feet more. They simply could have made it a little bit less. There's no basis for it. I, I understand you want me to finish my comments, so I'll conclude on that note. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Madam Chair, I have, Jen, Jen, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Jen Carte. I'm at 84 Tonawanda Street in Dorchester, and I'm here on behalf of Dorchester Growing Together, a neighborhood-wide civic pro-housing group with about 125 members. Over 200 new homes will be, will, here will complement the existing housing stock in the area, will help alleviate some small part of our current housing crisis, and benefit, and they will all benefit directly from the planned public improvements in the nearby 900 Morrissey and the Dorchester-based city proposals. We think this is an excellent opportunity to, with some small variances, create a bump in housing stock. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And now Minor?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
In behalf of Union Carpenters, all our Boston residents living in Washington, I want to go and represent for it. With great respect, I ask the board to please consider, BPDA already had a long, arduous process where the developer was, they put it in affirmative, and the developer did a great job answering our questions. This is housing greatly needed in the city of Boston, and that's why we're in full support of it. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, gentlemen, get to the city council, Frank Baker's office. Would like to go on record and support.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tom Mannion, Council Aaron Murphy's office. At this time, Council Murphy would also like to go on record and support. Thank you.
Any other raised? I do have one more. Good. Seven, Lee, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Stephen Lee, AD Deposit App, Dorchester. I am also a board member of the IAG and a board member of the Pope Hill Neighborhood Association. I am on record saying that I do support the project. I thought Michael did a great job and excited to see what they're going to do. Excited about the bike, the bike path and everything, so I support the project.
Thank you. That's all. Okay. Any other final questions from the board?
Madam Chair, can you just confirm that they are providing 15% of IDP?
Can the board want to confirm that?
Yep, it's actually, it's, it's 14.8%.
14.8%.
Thank you for being specific.
Right, yeah, no, I was watching earlier, so.
I, I can tell. Any other final questions from the board? Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion with two provisos. One, that it undergo BPDA Design Review, paying special attention to the ground floor, commercial vitality. And the second is to have BTD review on the parking. And I guess the third proviso is to ensure that there is a minimum of 14.8 units dedicated to affordable, to be in affordable.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd? Oh, he recused himself, sorry.
He recused himself.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. The motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. For the next case on the agenda is BOA 1435181, with the address of 551 Boilston Street. Is the applicant for their representative present?
Yes, Josh Zachem, 10 Tremont Street, Austin, Massachusetts. Business address. Is here along with Victor Chang and Senam Kamahia to present for the Copley Connection, 551 Boilston Street. You go to the next slide, please. Good, well, good afternoon, I should say, Madam Chair, members of the board. As I mentioned, my name is Josh Zachem. I'm here to present along with my colleagues, Senam Kamahia and Victor Chang, the Copley Connection. We are 100% locally-owned cannabis company, majority-minority-owned firm, founded by myself and Senam Kamahia. We were advised by Victor Chang, who is also here on the Zoom. All of us have a long history of working, living, and serving in the city of Boston, successfully operating businesses here. This is our home. I live about a block away from the proposed site. We are proud to come to you here today after unanimous approval from the Boston Cannabis Board on February 22nd of this year. Next slide, please. Our team, as noted, Josh Zachem, one of the co-founders, my colleague, Senam Kamahia, who is also here, is a longtime neighborhood resident, currently lives in Dorchester with his wife and family. Victor Chang, another member of our team, has two open dispensaries outside the city of Boston, is an expert in cannabis retail and operations. And our security team, our security directors, Jerry Smart and Joe Harris of Smart Security, both former longtime Boston Police Department officials. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Josh. Again, my name is Senam Kamahia. My home address is 63 Edwin Street in Dorchester, where I live with my wife and two sons. Our site is located at 551 Boilston Street, where Wendy's Restaurant was formerly located. It's about 6,400 square feet across three floors. It's located in a high-traffic retail area with great foot traffic and public accessibility. Next slide, please. There's only one dispensary open in the half-mile buffer. One of our sites is .4 miles away, but it's across the train tracks on Columbus Ave in the South End. Again, with our location, the heart of the Back Bay and high density of retail foot traffic, we believe that our site is a strong location and will support a second dispensary in the Back Bay. Next slide, please.
Hello, my name is Victor Chang, business address of 545 Boilston Street, Boston, which is just a few doors down from the proposed store. To further address the buffer, we wanted to look at its intent, which was to avoid the creation of a cannabis district or an area of the city overwhelmed by cannabis establishments. We clearly do not meet this definition, as our store is over .4 miles away from the other two permitted dispensaries. And as Senam noted, the one of them is located in the South End, which we believe will serve a very different customer base. In addition, The Boston Globe recently wrote an article about how busy the retail activity in the Back Bay has become, and now exceeds pre-COVID levels. For example, the article highlights that retail spending in the Back Bay has increased 12% from 2019. And the organization that best understands the retail and economic fabric of the community, the Back Bay Business, uh, Back Bay Association, knows that permitting the Copley Connection would not be detrimental in any way, and rather would be additive to the retail community. In their support letter, they note, "Our proposal is consistent with the organization's mission to enhance the quality of life and economic vitality of the Back Bay through advocacy, community building, and service delivery." Next slide, please. To support our belief that customer traffic in the Back Bay accommodates our opening, we examined Placer AI data. Placer AI is one of the most trusted retail foot traffic data sources used by most real estate developers. Looking at their data, for just 500 feet of our location, there are 1.8 million visitors making 4.2 visits annually. These visitors are not just walking by, but instead are spending time shopping, as their average dwell time is 61 minutes. The vast majority of these visitors are originating from their home, and after their visit, immediately head home. Again, this is only looking at 500 feet of our site, and not the 2,640 feet that would make up the half-mile radius of our store. If we were to look at the Placer data for that expanded radius, we would see an even greater number of visitors. Next slide, please. The other added benefit of our proposed site is the ease of access to public transportation and paid parking. There are four train stations, 17 Blue Bikes, 34 bus stops, and 38 P lots, all within the half-mile of our store. I'll turn it back over to Senam.
Next slide, please. We've listened to community feedback regarding frosted windows or dark storefronts. To that end, we've engaged Artists for Humanity co-founder to create artwork that'll beautify the storefront and activate the exterior. There'll be no cannabis products visible from the street whatsoever. Again, we've listened to the feedback and designed the storefront in a way that the neighbors have asked. We respect and value the opinion of the neighbors and seek to be a positive neighbor in every way we can. Next slide, please. Our location, which is fully ADA compliant, will have two floors accessible to the public. The first floor is where customers will queue in a waiting area, have their IDs verified, and then enter the store. If they have placed an order ahead of time, they can proceed to the point-of-sale counter and complete their express checkout. Again, our entryway is large enough so that there's minimal to no lineup on Boilston Street. Next slide, please. The second floor is our primary retail space for the customers who are visiting and have not placed an order ahead of time. On the second floor, they'll be able to speak with staff and peruse products. Again, because we have the primary retail experience located on the second floor, elevated from the ground level, there'll be no cannabis products visible from the street. The basement, which is not shown on the plans here, is our primary location for our backup house operations. It's accessible by the rear alleyway. It's where deliveries will be made. This allows us to be efficient with deliveries and make sure that we don't have any double parking or issues on Boilston Street. Next slide, please.
To continue and maintain our commitment to this neighborhood, one of which is especially important to me, as my wife Grace and young children pass by this site two to three times a day, we've committed to not selling any individual pre-rolled marijuana products. Our trash will be disposed in a locked dumpster in the rear alleyway to minimize any rodent impacts. You just heard, there'll be no deliveries on Boilston Street. We will have an interior waiting and queuing area, and there is a large sidewalk area that in its previous iteration was a patio. But in the unlikely event that there is larger crowds, we'll wait there out of the transit area along the sidewalk. There'll be no outdoor speakers for noise impact. And our proposed hours of operation are 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM, approved by the Cannabis Board, which are consistent, and in many places, excuse me, in many cases earlier than surrounding. businesses. Next slide, please. To make a positive impact to the community, we've identified several areas to leverage our resources for the benefits. Certainly, Copley Square Park across the street and across the street from my home as well. We've committed to working with the Boston Parks Department and other stakeholders to make significant and sustained contributions to the park financially, as well as additional maintenance shifts, volunteer cleanups, and contributing to other events in the park. This financial commitment consists of $25,000 in our first year of operation, up to $100,000 on an ongoing basis to the fund for parks earmarked for Copley Square. As you all know, Boylston Street is also a very busy retail corridor with lots of traffic, walking by today, obviously getting ready for the marathon. There's a lot going on there. But any day of the year, it's quite busy, and we are committed to having our staff monitor, regularly clean up the public spaces in front of our location. We will also have security staff at the exterior door there to prevent any loitering or other activities like that. We would hope to work with the Public Works Department to supply and service additional trash receptacles available to the public and conducting, again, monthly staff and volunteer cleanup days. As you also know, Copley Square is uniquely well-served by public transit and cycling infrastructure. We are going to encourage all guests and employees to walk, bike, or take transit to the location. We will provide a transit subsidy and complimentary blue bike memberships to all employees. We'll also provide bike parking, and our outdoor security staff will not permit any customer to enter the store who has double parked along Boylston Street. As far as public safety goes, of course, of outdoor security during our open hours and 24/7 high-resolution security cameras throughout the area. Next slide, please. Because of these commitments and our outreach efforts, we are really proud to come to you with significant support from the surrounding community. You can see on this map where many, although not all, the support letters and signed petitions have come from. We're proud to have support of the Back Bay Association, the Central Synagogue Boston, whose facility is opening up just down the street. We've also made commitments of neutrality in any organizing, labor organizing by employees. And again, I'm proud to have the support of District State Representative Jay Livingstone, District State Senator Lydia Edwards, our District City Councilor. Councilor Bach has written a letter of non-opposition, and Councilors at large, Rusi Luizhen, Julia Mahia, and State Rep China Tyler, among many others. We hope to earn your support today as well and stand ready to answer any of your questions. Thank you so much.
You can confirm, are you a, are you an equity applicant?
We are not. We are a majority minority-owned company, but we are not a Boston equity applicant.
Are there questions from the board? Okay. Are you done with, are you, are you done with your presentation? Do you want us to?
Unless, unless there are questions, Madam Chair.
Okay.
We do, we do slides. If there are specific questions around safety and security and other items, we can address. But if there are no questions?
Well, we do, so one of the, we do have a letter of opposition from Neighborhood Association of Back Bay that mentions the proximity of, you know, the buffer zone, but also to a school, the Snowden School. Can you address that?
Sure. So the Cannabis Control Commission, the statewide regulatory agency, has issued regulations. It's 935 CMR, that's Code of Mass Regulations 500.002. That measures it based on, I guess, in simple terms, the walking pathway. So it's not counting the buildings that you, you cannot walk straight through a building. Using that measurement, which is what the Boston Cannabis Board has adopted and led to their approval of us, we are close to, I believe, 700 feet away from that location. So outside of the school buffer zone.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll open it to public testimony.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is Maggie Vansler from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this point, we would like to defer the judgment of the board. We held a public meeting on December 14th for this project. The meeting was short, but a variety of opinions were expressed. Some thought that it was a good opportunity for the Back Bay, while others voiced concerns about oversaturation of the area with dispensaries and public consumption, given proximity to parks. Our office received scores of Form Sport letters from residents living in Back Bay across Boston and around Massachusetts. I'll also note that our office saw the letters of support from elected officials, including State Senator Lydia Edwards, State Representatives China Tyler, John Santiago, and Jay Livingstone, City Councilors at Large Julia Mahia and Rusi Luizhen, and we also saw the letter of support from the Back Bay Association. Prior to the public meeting, the applicant met with the Neighborhood Association of Back Bay, who wrote a letter of opposition citing concerns over proximity to Snowden School, proximity to Copley Square Park, and they feel this would add an unattractive storefront to this block of Boylston. We received a letter from Councilor Kenzie Bach, who is in non-opposition. We also received three letters in opposition from some surrounding neighbors. With that, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Anthony. I'm the Back Bay leader. I'm for Councilor Bach, and I'm just gonna briefly read the comments she prepared for today. So I am with the proponents, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to summarize neighborhood feedback. The proposed ownership group is an entirely local group, and it includes my city council predecessor, Josh Zachem. The ownership group has committed to labor peace, in other words, not opposing or interfering in any efforts by workers to organize in order to collect bargain. The site is well situated in regards to public transit, a swordwalk from Copley Station, Back Bay Station, and a number of bus lines. The proponents have committed to not selling single pre-rolled joints. They have also committed to adding a new trash barrel to mitigate any trash issues and to participate in volunteer cleanups of the park. Most impressively, however, they have made a major long-term financial commitment to the maintenance and beautification of Copley Square. This site is within the buffer zone of other cannabis locations. In light of community concerns of over saturation in the Back Bay area, it is my policy not to submit a letter of support for any non-equity applicant within such a buffer zone. But in light of all foregoing commitments to detailed operating plans, labor peace, and support for Copley Square, and my confidence in the local ownership group to carry these commitments out, I stand in non-opposition to the Copley Connections proposal. Thank you.
Minor?
Thank you, Madam Ambassador, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Chris with the Carpet Union. On behalf of all our Boston residents, we want to go on record and support of this project.
Thank you.
All right, perfect. I have four hands. Michael, you've been unmuted?
Yes, thank you. Can I be heard?
Yes, please. Say your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Michael Rubia. I'm an attorney at Lawson &amp; Whiteson at 88 Black Falcon Avenue in Boston, and I represent the owner of one of, of the site of one of the cannabis dispensaries that's within the buffer zone. It's 827 829 Boylston Street. I also represent Sierra Naturals, which operates a cannabis dispensary at that location. We're less than a half-mile from 551 Boylston Street. We're only three blocks away. And as the applicant has acknowledged, and as I noted in my written comments, there's another cannabis establishment that's been proposed for 329 Columbus Avenue, and it would also be within, within the buffer zone because it's less than a half-mile from 551 Boylston. And so Copley Connection is seeking a variance from the half-mile buffer zone requirement. That's, that requirement is a public policy determination by the City Council, and that determination should be respected. As the board knows, the standards for variance are strict. Even where they are met, which is not the case here, no one is entitled to variance. Variances should be granted sparingly, and this is particularly true for the buffer zone requirement. Under the city's equity program, equity applicants enjoy priority when it comes to cannabis licensing. Copley Connection acknowledges is not an equity applicant. If the board were to grant it a variance, it would give opportunities for equity applicants in the Back Bay and South End. The main reason, though, why variance should not be granted is that the standards for one, set forth in Article 73 of the zoning code, are not met here. No variance can be granted unless there are special circumstances or conditions applying to the site that are peculiar to that site but not to the neighborhood, and that would deprive the appallant of the reasonable use of that site. This is not the case. There's nothing unusual about 551 Boylston Street. It resembles dozens of other commercial sites in the area. It formerly hosts a restaurant, and it could host innumerable commercial retail ventures other than cannabis dispensary. Further, no variance can be granted unless for reasons of practical difficulty and demonstrable and substantial hardship, the variance is necessary for the reasonable use of the, of the site. This is absolutely not the case here. It could be used for all sorts of other enterprises. And so accordingly, we ask that the variance request be denied.
Thank you. Any other reasons?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was muted. Conrad, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, I'm Conrad Armstrong, 439 Marlowe Street. I'm representing, I'll try to show my camera here if I can.
Mute yourself, sir.
There we go. Sorry, Conrad Armstrong, 439 Marlowe Street, representing the Neighborhood Association of Back Bay. You have my letter, so I'll try to be quick. Now, I was not opposed to other establishments that should now open cannabis establishments in Back Bay. The question of how this should be measured, I respect the board to determine how that measured, but the way that it is quoted on your own announcement for this case that says it's aligned between the properties, in which case they are about 170 feet from a school. So I encourage the board to make sure what we put into what is the appropriate technical measure. And they're also .35 miles from AR and Boylston Street. And we understand that there are occasional needs for some variances. We feel that this is not a hardship case or special situation. We did not oppose granting a variance for rooted in, which was within the half-mile variance of AR, but that was an unusual situation if they were technically applicant. For those reasons, we feel that this should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have four more. Madam Chair, Anne, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, hi. Did you mean mayor?
Yes. Anne, it says.
That's you, mayor. It says Anne, though.
Oh, sorry. So, hi. Can you see me?
No, we cannot, but we can hear you.
Okay, I'm, I'm, there's no option for video here. I'm trying to, okay. So, yeah, hi. My, my name is Mayor Zarkey. I'm the founding rabbi of Central Synagogue Boston, just a block away from the establishment. I live in the Back Bay, just a couple of blocks away, Beacon Street. I can't think of a better person to be more responsible to run an establishment of this nature than, than Josh Zachem and his friend Senam. So I fully support the effort and just as a resident of the Back Bay for over 10 years now, concerned about, you know, different probabilities that potentially might arise from establishments. I, I, I fully, I'm just happy to know that Josh and Senam will be running this establishment. And I know Josh loves this, loves the neighborhood, loves the, you know, the city, and he fully has my support and encouragement in, in the Copley Connection.
Thank you. Thank you. Caroline, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please. Caroline Humphrey?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, sorry. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name's Capri. My address is 131 Commonwealth Avenue. I'm calling to put my support on record for this project. These three men have a long history in Boston, working and living. They're eager to work with the community and responsive to the community. I think the example seemed to be designed in front of the store feedback. I think additionally, a benefit, especially on Boylston Street, number one, nothing on Boylston Street looks attractive, so I don't understand the feedback about that. But I would indicate that having no cannabis visible to the street is a huge win, I think, for the community. Additionally, the location of it will reduce congestion due to accessibility to city bikes, public transportation. I love the program that they're offering employees to hopefully reduce the amount of people who are using cars to get into work. They are really committed to reinvesting in the parks. I think the Copley Square Park right there needs that kind of commitment from commercial locations in the city. And then again, I would just say that they're committed to Back Bay, as it was indicated in the Neighborhood Association letter, that they're committed to enhancing the quality of life and economic vitality through advocacy and community building, which I think they've already shown so far. So I can't wait to see what they do when the ZBA approves. Thank you so much. Appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Jay, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Jay Livingstone, and I'm the state representative for Back Bay. I'm also a resident of Back Bay. I live at 311 Commonwealth Ave, and I'm in full support of this project. I've known the applicants for many years, and they've been very involved in the community and will be great additions to the business community of Back Bay. And throughout this process, they've been very responsive, as it expects, based on their history of community involvement, to the concerns of neighbors adjusting the project. And I think there's a project that I hope you're, thank you.
Thank you. Jax, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please. Last, last two, please, Francis. Okay.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jax Brewer. I am a decade-long resident of the Back Bay. I live at 381 Commonwealth Ave, and I am in full support of this project. I also have known Josh and Senam for about a decade now, and their commitment to the community has always been for the utmost good of everyone around. They will do the absolute best to make this a better space. I agree with what Caroline said. The Boylston Street really needs an upgrade and a facelift, and I think this is definitely going to be a huge improvement. Having security on that street too will make it safer. And for, you know, my fellow NAV members, we have two cannabis dispensaries already, and I don't see any misuse of underage students or anyone near schools going to those areas, and I haven't seen any problems or misuse. So I don't find that to be an issue with the distance. So I hope you will all approve this project, and I appreciate you letting me speak. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Jax. And then the last one, Adam. You've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Hi, Adam Gendrow, 192 Hyde Park Ave in Jamaica Plain. Lifelong resident of Boston, live in JP, but working in Back Bay. I've known the three applicants for many years now, and I can't think of a better group of operators in cannabis industry. I think they do very well at this location. I think this location is extremely well-suited for this use. It has been nationally proven through, you know, data points at this point that cannabis dispensaries from solid operators help aid in beautification and safety of neighborhoods. So I think that particular area is in need of that. So I think they do well. So I fully support the operators on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. What's that, Anne? I'm sorry?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, Councilor Lloyd, Michael Flaherty. The council would defer to the board on this particular proposal, would simply emphasize the half-mile buffer and the exhaustive community-wide process that led to the text amendment to the zoning code.
Thank you. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, could I just have one clarification in terms of ownership? Can the applicant please provide us with the breakdown of ownership since the issue of the equity applicant came up a couple of times?
Sure. I can say right now, at this point in time, Victor Chang has 9.9%, and Senam has 45%. So we are a majority minority owned firm, but there are six standards to meet for the Boston equity application. Some of those are based on income, as well as race census tract, which you lived in. And we, as a group, did not meet those, those specific standards to be an equity applicant, but we are a majority minority owned firm.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval for this applicant only, which has a majority minority model.
Ownership, yep. Okay, may I have a second?
Senator.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you so much. Thank you very, very much.
We'll now move forward to recommendations scheduled for 11:00 AM. I will read the case num, case number, the address, and the result from the, of the vote from the zoning advisory subcommittee, and move on from there. Case number BOA 142 1688, address of 1066 Bennington Street. The vote was to deny, deny the vote. Case BOA 135 2188, the address of 88 Chelsea Street. The decision was to improve with proviso for BPDA design review of the hatch and moving deck back. deck back. Case BOA 1424488, with the address of 36 High Street, was approved. Case BOA 1399338, with the address of 9 Sackville Street, was approved with proviso for BPDA design review. Case BOA 1408580, the address of 24 Pleasant Street, was approved with proviso for BPDA design review for the dormers. Case BOA 1435497, with the address of Lewisburg Square, was approved with the proviso that the plans be submitted to the Boston Landmark Commission for approval. Case BOA 1394771, the address of 1,002 to 1,004 Tremont Street, was approved. Case BOA 1434938, with the address of 9 Wenlock Street, was approved. Case BOA 1409011, the address of 26 Greenview Avenue, was approved with proviso that the plans be submitted to the BPDA for review, that the dormer dimensions be reduced, and that the condenser unit be relocated and screened up. Case BOA 1415260, with the address of 4 Wallingford Road, was approved with the proviso that the plans be submitted to the Aberdeen Architectural Conservation Commission of Boston Landmarks Commission for review. Case BOA 1382453, with the address of 226 Harvard Avenue, was approved with the proviso that the hours of operation be amended to Monday to Friday from 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and for Saturday and Sunday, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Case BOA 1434811, with the address of 18 to 20 Meridian Street, was approved with the proviso that the plans be submitted to the BPDA review. And that is all, all of the recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Stembridge. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve the recommendation. Do you want to bottom of the?
Thank you. May I have a second?
Take a second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza.
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. All right, along to 11:30.
For the rediscussions, case, first case in this category is BOA 1214604, with the address of 423 William F. McCollum Highway. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes, good afternoon, board. Attorney Timothy Fraser from the law firm Dane Torpey, Pearl Street, Boston, business address. Along with me, I have members and clergy from the church, as well as the applicant and some design professionals for any additional technical questions.
Please proceed.
Great, so, thank you, Madam Chair. Our application seeks to erect an outdoor advertising device, in this case, a digital billboard. It'll be set on a single monopole. It has back-to-back digital faces. The dimensions in our application is actually listed as 14 by 48 feet with a 60-foot height, but due to our discussions with the community, we actually have reduced that height to 55 feet. And our proposal seeks to remove the two static signs, the traditional marquees that are there, and replace those signs with one billboard that goes in the middle of those two signs. So we'll be removing two and replacing one. Go to the next slide. I think you can see a rendering of the location, just to orient board. This is on 423 McCollum Highway, which is a busy commercial strip, busy commercial throughway. There is, and we had a study performed, there's actually no residential impact to the sign. It faces the federally funded highway, and so we're seeking to have that put in place, as I said, of the two signs that have been historically there. And again, I don't know if you see the next slide, is there a rendering? Right, so what you see there is the existing sign, and that might look familiar to folks. And there's one that you can see, if you go on the next slide, you'll see the other sign that will be removed. That's right. And then here on this slide, you see the rendering of the newly proposed sign, as well as the landscaping, which the applicant will be responsible for. That hill is about 100 feet, so you can see this is just about the scale of where the new sign would reach, and also some of the proposed greenery. So with that, I don't know if there's any questions from the board. We're happy to entertain those, but that's essentially the proposal. Happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I don't have questions, but did BPDA make a recommendation?
Their recommendation is for denial. Yeah, they just.
So we did, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Ms. Better Barazza. So we did touch base with BPDA during our process. The initial discussions were that they were going to see what zoning came out with, so we're certainly willing to comply with any BPDA design review with regard to the sign. We think we do meet the criteria in Section 11-7, particularly since replacing the traditional marquee signs are encouraged under that section. And that's really what we're trying to do. This particular area, as you know, is undergoing some extreme changes, and we think that what we're proposing is more in line with what neighborhood has turned into as far as that commercial throughway.
Can you confirm the sign is only one directional? So what I'm looking at is, I don't see anything on the other side. Is that correct?
No, no, it is not. It is two-faced, so it will have signage on the other side, and I think, I don't know if we have, but from the other direction, you'll also be able to see it as well. And I think there's a slide there that shows that, but if not, yes, the sign is two-sided, so you would see it from that side as well. But both sides have zero impact to any residential on the other side of the street, which you can't see, but it's to the right of your screen. That's rental cars. I believe there's a Starbucks open, so there's only commercial activity on the other side of the street.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Our office held an abutters meeting on June 9th, 2022. Many direct abutters joined the call, as well as members of the East Boston's broader community. There were opposition voiced from direct abutters regarding environmental impacts, as they stated this is a conservation area for wild animals, and also commented on concerns that light pollution from the billboard could be a danger to drivers on McCollum Highway. Abutters shared their discontent with the current state of the property's conditions. Other residents in attendance supported the proposed billboard, stating that the billboard would bring revenue to the church so they can better upkeep the landscaping and property of the grounds. The applicant also met with the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council. On two occasions, the feedback from the council was very similar to the feedback received during the abutters meeting, but ultimately, the board decided to vote in support of this project on a special meeting held, seven residents supporting, six in opposition. Our office received three letters of opposition from the abutters, which I believe we forwarded to the board, and there may have been other letters submitted. We also received 382 letters of support in support of the billboard from the broader East Boston neighborhood, as well as a letter from State Representative Adrian Madaro. With that, we defer to the judgment of this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie?
Hi, my name is Debbie Razzo. I live at 34th Street, East Boston. I'm the president of East Boston Pocwana, and I am a co-chair of the Maverick Central Civic Association. I am in favor of this because that hill has been nothing but an eyesore for many, many years. I'm a lifelong resident of East Boston, and I totally support this. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty, Council to go record support.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, member of the board, Tom Anian from Council Aaron Murphy's office. Council Murphy, at this time, would like to go in strong support for this project, for one being this digital billboard will bring in revenue for the Dawn Orient Fathers, thus allowing them to expand and continue their charitable efforts the organization had done for centuries. Also, law enforcement agencies rely on the visibility of digital billboards to assist them in putting out public service announcements, weather reports, emergency traffic conditions, Amber alerts. So this will be a positive enforcement for the community. So at this time, Council Murphy would like to go on record in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Gail, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, thank you. My name is Gail Miller. My address is 232 Orient Ave. I've been a, and I live within a stone's throw of this urban wild. I've been a 42-year resident, very active in the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council. And I would like to point out that the proponent, the Sons of Divine Providence, does not appear to be the owner of the billboard seeking a variance, but I would, but I believe it would only be a recipient of future revenues issued by Maverick Media. Most importantly, I would like to direct your attention to the fact that this proposal is to be situated within a uniquely zoned conservation sub-district, being one of only several in the entire city, which addresses the natural aesthetic characteristics of the area. It does not allow for billboards for which this proponent is seeking a variance. Digital billboards are now only allowed in several neighborhoods in the city, and this is not one of the areas. Also, a digital billboard already exists on the next corner, and several existing extremely large billboards are already dotting the highway in alignment with this proposal. Billboards are currently considered a blight, and this proposal would add to the visual and light pollution in the naturally vegetated hillside, which is in conflict with the conservation sub-district zoning. I believe as part of your deliberations, it needs to consider whether or not proponent has a tempted to satisfy other financial endeavors here before it can seek remedy. The church itself is a major landowner in the neighborhood, and it recently received $10 million this year when it sold their nursing home. Lastly, this conservation sub-district site abuts a residential neighborhood, and a digital billboard is in direct conflict with the characteristics of the conservation sub-district zoning. And I would like to add one final note, that there is no way to know which of our church parishioners supporting this, are abut or having standing, or having standing, and may not even be residents of East Boston. To react to the city speaking about the future development along this neighborhood, we cannot project future, we can only speak to present circumstances. And if federally funded highway, I believe this is in violation of their code, because under the Highway Beautification Act, it does not permit billboards. So, and I speak in opposition, obviously.
Thank you.
Thank you for the allowing me to comment.
Francis, any other raised hands?
No, all the raised hands.
So, Madam Chair, I do have a few raised hands that are actually in the room with me, if I can allow them to speak, and then I could address Ms. Miller's comments if I could.
Well, are the people in the room the proponents?
Yes.
We're looking for public testimony.
Yes, yes, yes.
If you're part of the development.
No, no, we have residents here. Yes, I'm just, I'm just meeting here because it's one central place, but they are, they are residents of the neighborhood.
Please invite one to speak. Yes, thank you.
Father, whatever you want.
Father Mirek Kowalczek, I am here, a local spirit of the Sons of Divine Providence on Orientifathers. So we are here in the Orient Heights, in this part of East Boston, for almost a century, 24 years exactly. And we are serving this community, nursing home, it's old four years ago, so I was a little confused year ago, we received money. We serve in nursing home, in the shrine, we are serving almost 3,000 immigrants, people from Latin America, from America and from.
Can you just confirm, are you the proponent? Are you the, are you the person seeking this app? Are you the organization seeking the application?
I am the priest, I am the priest from the church, for this church, I'm sorry.
Okay, but you're the, can the attorney?
I am resident here. I am resident.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Salvatore Matino, lifelong resident, East Boston. I live at 76 Martin Renzi Avenue. I am an abutter. I live under Donna Hill. I'm actually here because I'm finally excited about a billboard. If you are familiar with McCollum Highway, there's numerous billboards on that highway. Maybe three years ago, they approved a digital one at that location. But I'm excited because these two billboards, they really need some care. That one billboard, electronic, will be helpful to the church, but also for me, is to finally have someone that's accountable to that billboard, that if there's a problem in that hill that needs to be cleaned and maintained, I know I could call that person to go over there and maintain it. I could tell you, Madam Chair, person, living under this hill and talking to my neighbors, most of us cannot all support this billboard. There might be a couple that are opposed with, but most of us do support it, and a lot of them are in the mood today with me in support of this billboard. So I urge you to support this billboard, because I think it's a good thing for the neighborhood, because it stays, the billboard stays on the highway where there's numerous billboards on that highway, Madam Chair, person.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have one more. Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Joseph Carino. Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Joseph Carino. My address is 43 CB Rabbies, Boston. I'm an abutter to the project. I've lived here my entire life. I'm the director of servicing at Painters District Council, 35. I have a letter from the union in strong support of this project. Many of my members are from East Boston. This place has been a neighborhood eyesore for too long, and this project will be cleaned up and maintained with Maverick Media in the future. This is a great proposal, because no one can even see from the hill, because it is down on the highway. Again, I'm in strong support of this project, going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yep, any other questions from the board? Madam Chair, I do have one more raised hand. Final raised hand, we need to move on. Thank you. Joe, you've been unmuted. If you want to state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Joe Mario. I, my address is 52 Waldemar Avenue, East Boston. I live about one and a half blocks from the property, and I just want to reiterate what is being said about what a mess the property is now. I think it's a complete win-win for our community, in for a location with a new billboard. I do know personally the people involved with the billboard. They've been very generous to our community in the past, and I expect them to continue to do so. Strongly support it.
Thank you.
And then, Madam Chair, just to address some of the comments with regard to the, to the conservation area, I mean, what the aim here is, is to, as you've heard, that, you know, this site is littered with trash, and we do intend to clean it up to make it more habitable, habitable to the, to the environment. And then, secondly, with regard to electronic billboards, there is, you know, as you know in the code. there is, you know, as you know, in the code, the, the code, I think it's Section eleven-seven, which we recited for, does put forth, you know, five or six criteria, which we all, which, all of which will meet, and any other conditions that we will intend to meet. And then, third, with regard to the church not being the owner of the billboard, that's correct. The church is not in the business of owning billboards and operating billboards. So there is a lease agreement, but the church will be receiving the revenues from that.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
Would I to make a motion for approval for this applicant only?
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
No, given this is a conditional use and it's not allowed in this area.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
No.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
To be consistent, the chair also votes no. Motion does not carry. Mr. Javier, what's our, do we have to put another motion?
Uh, if you don't need...
Is this fine? Okay.
Yeah, it's fine, yeah.
Okay. Next case?
Madam Chair.
We, the next two are companion cases, first being BOA one-four-one-nine-four-zero-three, with the address of Five Nancy Street. Second being HBOA one-four-one-nine-four-zero-four, with the address being One-twenty-seventh Saint Andrew Road. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes, I am, Mr. Stenbridge. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small, of a business address of One-Tenth Road. Today, we are here seeking relief to erect a two-family dwelling on a vacant lot. Here, the zoning sub-district is a two-F four-thousand. That's not our plan.
Yeah, you're showing the wrong plans.
Yep.
This is the next one?
Yes.
Thank you.
Again, we're seeking relief to erect a two-family dwelling on a vacant lot. The zoning sub-district here is a two-F four-thousand. Now, lot size is thirty-six hundred square feet. With regard to our, there, we have the East Boston iPod. We also are being cited for the conditional use driveway, which I'll get to in a minute, regarding to One-twenty-seventh Saint Andrew Road. Side yard violation requirement is seven feet. We're proposing five. Our building alignment is going to be modal. The lot area requirement is four thousand. We have thirty-six hundred square feet. Front yard setback requirement is ten feet. We have five, which is the modal setting. And the rear yard requirement is forty feet, and we have thirty-six. Now, with regard to the companion case at One-twenty-seventh Saint Andrew Road, we are applying for a new supremacist permit to allow parking the driveway. What we're doing is we're doing a shared driveway. And so, we're being cited as supremacists at One-twenty-seventh Saint Andrew Road. Both properties are in common ownership, and the new proposed two-family, at Two Nancy Street will be for the owners, residents, or family members who will be coming to that. And so, with regard to One-twenty-seventh Saint Andrew Road, we are being cited because the driveway is getting access to make this park again. We are proposing a shared driveway with the curb cut in the back of Saint, at One-twenty-seventh Saint Andrew's Road, going into the underground and in-ground parking at Five Nancy Street. With regard to the units at Five Nancy Street, Madam Chair, Unit one will be a one-bedroom, one-bath of about nine-hundred-and-twenty square feet, and Unit two will be a three-bedroom, two-bath at one-thousand four hundred. I know our architect, Sheena Gentis, is on. If there are any further questions, charge planned. But we'll stop there. We'll continue with questions at, folks at that.
Thank you, Mr. Small. Any questions on the plans? Okay, hearing none. May we have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. ONS hosted a Butters meeting for this project on September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two. Four Butters joined the call. Butters expressed concerns over height and density and parking, with one Butter stating they did not think a two-family house will enhance the street. The project also presented to the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council on October twenty-twenty-two and February of this year. The council voted to oppose, with thirty-seven members opposing and nine supporting. Members commented that the street was too dense and this applicant is seeking too many variances. With that, we defer to the judgment of this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? No other, no additional raised hands, Madam Chair. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA Design Review.
Barazza, second.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a good afternoon.
Next, we will move on to the one P.M. hearing. The first one being Case BOA one-four-four-four-three-eight-four, the address of Eleven Walker Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes. Good afternoon, members of the board. Attorney Laurence Cutino with a business address of Two-Forty-five Sumner Street in East Boston. We're here today seeking to enlarge the back dormer of an already existing dormer of a single-family house and add a roof deck to that dormer. Some of the relief that we are requesting is roof structure restrictions, required open space. Required would be four-hundred-and-fifty square feet, and we're at eighty, even though we're adding with the roof deck. Side yard five, it would be a five-foot minimum, and we're at two-feet-six for proposed. And rear yard would be a twenty-five-foot minimum, and we're at point-eight proposed, which are essentially already existing conditions. But because we're increasing the non-conformity, that's why we're with you today. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Absolutely. Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay. With that, may I have public testimony?
Good.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Sashawn. Bringing with the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. Is at this time that we defer to the judgment of the board. Some background on the community process. The director Butters were fired, and that was completed on January twenty-fourth. And that we would like to defer to the judgment of the board.
Any other raised hands? Yes. Beth?
Hi, I'm just the architect. If you have any questions.
Okay. Any other question? I mean, sorry, any other raised hands?
No additional raised hands.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review paying special attention to the access to the roof deck with the stairs to provide an alternate, and that's it.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Case BOA one-four-two-three-zero-seven-two, the address of Fifteen Rustfield Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Is Mr. Fraser present?
Did not check in. No.
All right, so let's move on and come back to that?
Okay. Next, we have five companion cases, the first being Case BOA one-three-six-four-three-seven-one, address of One-O-five Norwell Street. Next is Case BOA one-three-six-four-three-nine-five. The address is also One-O-five Norwell Street. Case BOA one-three-six-four-three-seven-six, with the address of One-O-one Norwell.
I'm here. Hello, guys.
We're on Norwell right now.
Well, we'll come back to you, sir. Next case is BOA one-three-six-four-three-eight-zero, the address of One-O-three Norwell Street. And the last being Case BOA one-three-six-four-three-nine-one, with the address of One-O-seven Norwell Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes, my name is Darwin Fortuna. I'm representing Mr. Richard and Francina Liriano on this project. I'm the project architect from, well, design architects based out of Salem, Massachusetts.
Great. Briefly walk us through the proposal and the violations.
All right, so we are subdividing an existing lot into four different lots, and we've already met with the community and have gotten feedback. So the project is basically creating more housing for the housing stock that we have, shortage of housing stock that we have, actually. And so, we decided to divide the lot into four, and the violations are FAR violation. Instead of zero-point-five, we require zero-point-nine, and the minimum lot size of five thousand, we would like it to be three-thousand-seven-hundred. And there is also a violation on the parking buffer that was shown. So if we can move forward to the next. Actually, I'm not sure why that's the one that was submitted. That was amended ever since. And the amendment was simple. We didn't want to provide a lot of curb cuts. We didn't, we didn't need to provide a lot of curb cuts, and we met with the Department of Public Works, and they requested that. We reduced amount of curb cuts, so the latest version of that I have is dated oh-five-sixteen twenty-twenty-two. I'm not sure what that's.
But can you let us know how many curb cuts you do have?
Exactly. That's what you see right there is exactly what's done. That's correct. Thank you. So it would be like one per, per building. The building, each, each one is two-family and provides about five bedrooms per unit. Basically, trying to, trying to, again, provide proper housing, families to live there within the neighborhood. One of the iterations was a massive block of a building that really wasn't agreeing with the neighborhood and the fabric. So we decided to divide it into smaller pieces and, and consistent with even the Butters. The buildings next door are pretty much same size and same style. So we, we, we maintain that, this project. Also, just so you know, Flow Design Architects focuses a lot on diversity in the field of architecture and construction, and that comes full plate here with the owners. They are minority owners. They live within the neighborhood. They, we have Richard, who is a builder. His son just decided to be an architect, and they have a little one that was born. I'm gonna make sure she's also an architect. So they are trying to be entrepreneurs, developers, builders within the community, which is something that, that we try to promote and work on.
Them, I just got a text about half an hour ago that Deborah wants to chat about the...
Frances, can you mute? Mute folks? Mr. Fortuna?
Yep. So, yeah, so the...
Not, not Mr. Fortuna, but the...
No, I did not mute him. I didn't mute him.
Okay.
I think I was muted, but, so, yeah, so that's, that's pretty much it. So that's the way that the units are laid out.
I'm not sure who's talking, who's speaking in the...
Thank you. Okay, sorry about that.
It's okay. So, as I said, so the, the, the units are divided into lower level, which would be the basement and the first floor, and then the uppermost floors are for the second unit. And as I said, they each provide five bedrooms and two bathrooms.
Thank you. Any questions on the plans?
Madam Chair, do you have a question for the applicant? Are you, would you be open for tandem spaces so that we can reduce the curb cut to ten feet?
Yeah, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a problem. What do you think, Richard?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay. And then, should we assume that the elevations is kind of repeatable in the other three lots? This is like copy and paste, copy and paste?
Yes, the elevations are consistent within the lots.
No, are they repeated? So they're gonna, it's gonna be the same style that what I'm seeing right in front of me?
Yes, yeah, essentially, exactly the same building for, for buildings.
Okay. Would you be open to modifying it a little bit? So you, I'm looking at the Google Earth, and the houses that exist are kind of unique in themselves versus it being all the same as a modular?
Yes, I mean, again, in my, in my opinion, I think that that, that would actually be richer for the neighborhood, but...
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that. I was considering it, because I had brought it up, and I was thinking about doing that.
Okay.
Now, the thing is, it will have to take more exploration, but for sure, yeah, explore each one. It wants to be unique, yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm not, you know, suggesting a very costly, each one being different. It's just in order to enhance the, the street, each houses are unique, so it's just to take that into consideration, even its variant and material palette. Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Will any of the makeup of these, will any of them be affordable? Will any of them be for homeownership? Breakdown?
Um, there are gonna be micro rent.
And these are condos? Are these homeownership or rentals?
No rentals.
Rentals. Okay. Does that answer your question, Mr. Stenbridge?
That answers my question.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. May I take public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of this board. My apologies, I don't have a lot of background information on the community process, but we did receive a letter from the local civic association, Harvard Washington Norwell Civic Association, which sent a letter to this board in opposition to this proposal, citing the size of the proposed buildings, which they didn't feel would fit in with the character of the neighborhood. With that, we defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I do have one raised hand. Mike Sanders, you've been unmuted. If you can state your name and address for the record, please. Mike?
Yeah, hello?
Hi, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Michael Sanders, right across the street from this project at One-Forty-Nine Norwell Street. We were not informed, we... Excuse me?
Sorry, sorry. I was just trying to understand if you're for or against.
I was about One-Forty-Nine Norwell Street, right across the street from that project, that building that's been there for years, and I grew up around there for the last fifty. We was not aware of, we was aware that the building was broke. We're not aware that they're trying to build new houses over there or change into houses. My concern is, is, is the neighborhood, the design. They already built the new ones up the street a couple of years ago, about ten. Now you're putting them right here, and we, we, we had problems with that building before. Before, I don't know who the ownership is now, but they was renting it out, and there was like a lot of... but they was renting it out, and there was like a lot of traffic, and it was just real disruptive, there's a lot of elderly in that neighborhood. So how are we gonna accommodate them? Thank you.
Thank you. Brian? This is Councilor Royall's office. Yes?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Iyame Delewala, I'm the Office of City Councilor Brian Royall. And in regard, in regards to the Norwell Street parcels, we did not receive any letters of opposition. And originally, as Connor said, we received from Harvard Washington Norwell, originally a letter of denial, but they further sent a letter of conditional support. In regards to this project, the council would like to go in opposition at this project at this time, just to allow for more community engagement.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? Nope, no additional raised hands.
You're, you're on, if I may?
Yes, sir.
So I'm, I'm the owner, I'm Rachel Liriano, I've been in the community for about 35 years. My whole family lives in Boston, I'm a Boston resident also, you know, I've been developing for about 50 years now, small developer. Now, when it comes to the property, here I came aware of how we're gonna manage. I've been managing multiple properties, I own about 20 units that I manage, I have zero problem with them. And that, you know, I'm just, I have, you could search my resume, I have, you know, there's no problem in my, when it comes to tenants, putting complaints on me.
Now, another thing, Madam Chair, if I can. We dead meat before the community twice. The first round, we were concerned about, there were some concerns about sustainability approaches to the project, and that's when we decided that we're gonna be going all electric heat pump systems, and there were some things that we added. Then the second time, it was approved by the Neighborhood Association. They only required that the parking had a fence or some sort of protection for children, and they were actually very happy with the amount of room space that we were providing around building. So we dead meat twice with them, we got consensus from that.
Thank you.
Actually, Linda Champion, who was there, yeah.
May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with, with a proviso that the project undergoes BPDA non-review for the site planning to, to only allow for one curb cut that is 10 feet. And the other would be to kind of review the exterior to ensure that there are some unique qualities for each of the units.
Thank you, and can you confirm you mean one curb cut that's 10 feet per?
Per each, yes, so given that, given that the lot is smaller, it would lean itself to a better kind of pedestrian flow and connection to minimize it to a more narrow curb cut for each of the lot.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Miss Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1406915, the address being 147 Noposet Avenue. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Is Mr. Kearns on?
Brian in?
Yeah, they're, they're here.
Brian? And Declan? Um. Because this is, they signed off. I don't see him on there anymore, they did sign in.
Declan, I think is on as an attendee with his hand raised. Declan Kearns?
I see a Brian, oh, Brian, yes, thank you, Hunter, thank you. Brian?
Hello?
Go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board members, my name is Brian Kingsbury, I'm the owner of 147 Noposet Avenue, Dorchester. We're before the board today trying to put an extension on the back of our house that's about 276 square feet. It's a one-story extension with a roof deck on the second, on the top of it for our neighbors who are on the second floor. We need a variance on the back of the house, the current setback is 30 feet, and we have 21.9 feet, which is in existence with our current garage, which is attached. And so we're before the board to get that variance.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process, our office held an abutters meeting on December 8th. No concerns were raised, the applicant addressed all questions that residents had, and they went on to the Pope's Hill Neighborhood Association, I understand the civic group did not have any concerns either. With that, we defer to this board, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, John McEran, City Councilor Frank Baker's office, would like to go on rec, would like to on record and support.
Okay, and I have one addition, one hand raised. Sure. Deborah and John, you've been unmuted, if you can state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Deborah Scully, my husband John is right here with me, 73 Holden Street in Dorchester. We went to the Pope's Hill Neighborhood Association meeting, where it was presented, the plans were shown, and there was a presentation, and we're very much in favor of the project, it's a beautiful piece of property, and it will just add to the beauty, and in no way impede the neighborhood, thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Miss Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Next, we have case BOA 1435173, with the address being 400 Belgrade Avenue. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Pugini, on behalf of the applicant on 400 Belgrade Avenue. How are you this afternoon?
And how are you?
Great, so 400 Belgrade Ave, it's kind of an older case, it's neighborhood shopping, 10,421 square feet. This was actually approved by the BPDA back in 2016, as well as zoning, it was like in December, I think the zoning board was seven, early 17. It had been embroiled in litigation regarding ownership, not any abutter issues or anything like that. The system we were using for parking, they discontinued, we had reached out to the BPDA to, because when this was permitted, to put it in perspective of how long ago it was, it was 18 units with 33, 33 parking spaces. So we went back to the BPDA, said we could lower that amount to 24, they said, no, we want this to be one-to-one parking in 18. We filed a notice of project change, and that was approved by the BPDA in December, on December 15th, and we're here that, for that today. So the only thing is changing, the building's staying the same, everything is staying the same in the project. The only change is, instead of having 33 parking spaces for 18 units, per the BPDA's recommendation, we're 18, for 18 spaces, one-to-one. I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I, I have a pragmatic question, what happened to the leftover space?
It was, it was underground, it was going down deeper, Miss Bede Brazza, so it was digging down below. So we went through this long PIC involved process, and then they discontinued this three-level.
Got it, it was stacked, okay, great, okay. Didn't know if you were gonna give that, give that back to the community, okay, sounds good, thank you.
That would be great, thank you.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office like to defer to the judgment of this board. As the applicant's representation mentioned, this project was originally approved in 2016, when there was a significant community process. I understand the BPDA held one public meeting at the community's request to discuss the changes. Beyond that, there has not been significant changes to the proposal. With that, we defer to the board, thank you.
Any other raised hands?
There are no raised hands, I'll watch you.
All right, with that, may I have a motion?
I'm sure I make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Miss Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you, enjoy your day, thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1424793, the address being 7 Sogron Road. Is the applicant or the, or representative present?
Hello, my name is Derek Rubenoff, Derek Rubenoff Architect, we're the architect of the project, with me is Anat Beck Noctigal, team here at Derek Rubenoff Architect, and also David Lupides, who's the owner of the building. And the, the project is really pretty simple, it's an existing low-rise, it's a four-story, four-story building with several apartments in it. There was a laundry mat that had been on the ground level here, and it basically failed business, and the, the space has been vacant for some time. And what we'd like to do is convert it into an accessible apartment, a two-bedroom apartment. And this needs relief or extension of the non-conforming use. It's a conditional use actually in multifamily residential zone, and we also need relief for usable open space and off-street parking insufficient.
Great. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam, excuse me, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Frank Mendoza, Mayor's Austin Brighton Liaison for the Office of Neighborhood Services. Here to testify that this applicant did have a public meeting at the end of January, January 31st. There were no significant concerns raised by the abutters. This applicant also presented to the Brighton Alston Improvement Association. I believe Annabella Gomes, the zoning chair of the Brighton Alston Improvement Association, is on this hearing to give testimony now. With that said, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board, thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? Okay, hearing none, may I, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve with the proviso that no building code relief be granted.
I have a second.
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 Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Miss Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1443680, the address being 122124 Brighton Avenue. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Derek Small, have a visit to 400 Thompson Road. Today, we are here to sit with you, to change the legal occupancy of the building from offices, sale of wholesale goods, a retail store, to a restaurant with takeout and with a restaurant food court. The zoning sub-district here is the Harvard Ave, Community Commercial 1. Our lot size is 18,072 square feet. Madam Chair, our zoning violations are, the takeout use for the restaurant is a forbidden use in a, in this zoning sub-district, which I find is a little odd, but, and the restaurant use is a conditional use. It's a business district, community commercial district, and those are the violations along with the off-street parking.
Any questions from the board?
We're doing a restaurant with a food court, the food court will consist of approximately 15 vendors, and we are working with BTP to address the take it, the takeout use in the delivery service aspect.
Thank you.
I'll stop there and open up any questions.
Questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Frank Mendoza here again, Alston Brighton Liaison to the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Here to testify that the applicant did reach out to both the abutters and to the larger community via the Alston, the Alston Civic Association. We heard no significant concerns from the community, and the Alston Civic Association wrote a letter this morning around 7:30, I believe, to the board, expressing their approval of the proposal before you. With that said, at this time, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board, thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? Yes.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Tony Tizadaro, representing the Alston Civic Association. We would like to go on record and support, this is a tremendous opportunity for our local small businesses, given the challenges that they're currently facing, so again, we want to go on record and support.
Thank you. No additional raised hands.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Councilor, would like to clarify and come to the record and support.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I put forward a motion of approval with BPDA design review on exterior changes.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Miss Bede Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Madam Chair, just one clarification, that is with the takeout use provisos, right?
Correct.
Okay, just want to be clear, I just want to clear up the record, okay, thank you so much. You all have a good day, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1411397, the address being 610 Chelsea Street. Is the applicant or their representative present?
Yes, good afternoon, Leslie Delaney Hawkins with the law firm of Prince Lebel Ty with an address of 1 International Place. On behalf of the applicant, with me today is Shane Hyde, who is the CEO of the applicant entity. This is a certified Boston Equity applicant who is seeking to cite a wholesale and courier cannabis delivery operation at 610 Chelsea Street in what is currently a vacant space in an industrial manufacturing area in East Boston. There is no public-facing component to this proposal, this will strictly be wholesale and delivery via the courier model. The structure consists of two stories, approximately 2,500 square feet, with 12 onsite parking spots. As you can see from the plans and on slide two specifically, the storage area, including the vault, is located on the first floor, towards the front of the space, with the packaging in the, in the rear. The second floor will be used for office. Upon commencing operations, we anticipate beginning with three delivery vehicles, conducting legal deliveries between 8 a.m. and 9 p.m. in the greater Boston area. The hours of operation approved by the Boston Cannabis Board are 7 a.m. to 10 p.m. to allow for beginning and wind down of operations. This site will be fully secured, alarmed with both interior and exterior cameras and lighting, in full compliance with the Cannabis Control Commission. All products will be stored in a highly secured vault, and odor controls will be put in place to ensure that there's no odor emanating from the premise. We anticipate hiring between 20 and 25 employees, the majority of which will be full-time, and we'll be focusing on diversity, inclusion, and local hiring, not only in our employees, but also in contracting with other operations. We attended an abutters meeting hosted by the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services, and also reached out to the Civic Association as well as the elected officials, and we have only been met with, with positive feedback. Again, as the, the board is aware, delivery licenses are limited to the first three years to social equity and economic empowerment applicants only, and in this case, this applicant is also a certified Boston applicant. So with that, I know it's been a long day, and we are here to answer any questions.
Of course, thank you. Any questions from the board? Yes, it has been a long day, well, the location seems pretty appropriate, so may we have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. This time the Mayor's Office like to defer At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of this board. Some background information on the community process. ONS hosted a Butters meeting for this proposal on November twenty-second of 2022. Only one Butter joined the meeting, expressed no concerns and asked no questions. The applicant also reached out to the Eagle Hills Civic Association to inform them about the proposal. The civic expressed no concerns at that time, from what I understand. With that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands, Francis? No raised hands, Madam Chair. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion for the approval for this applicant own.
May I have a second? Oh, thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Miss Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, before we adjourn, there was one case that we did not get a response from.
Yep, is Fifteen Russ Fields... Is the applicant for Fifteen Russ Field on? Yes. Timothy?
Yes, Madam Chair. My apologies, technical difficulties between the last hearing of this are Timothy Fraser, Corby 175 Federal Street, Fifteen Russ Field Street.
Can you walk us through the project?
Sure. So my client, U-Haul Boston, is the owner of the property and basically just seeking a variance to update the building's aid and occupancy to match its current use.
I can't hear you.
It was already operating as a self-storage facility when my client purchased the property. And once they engaged in our firm, we discovered that the prior self-storage owners not only hadn't updated the building's user occupancy since nineteen seventy-eight, but also was operating or existed in a manager's apartment on the premises. So we're seeking to have the manager's apartment legalized as well as having the occupancy updated from its nineteen seventy-eight occupancy when it manufactured shoe soles and marble sinks to have it updated to its current use, which is self-storage plus one accessory apartment dwelling unit. That one-bedroom apartment will house only U-Haul's permanent onsite managers so it's not offered to the public or for public vendor occupancy. The current occupant, or rather, there's nobody that occupies it currently, but upon approval, that onsite manager, who's a seventeen-year employee of U-Haul, will be the only occupant of that apartment. And that manager will actually provide the facility with twenty-four-hour security and monitor public safety on the premises. So that's our proposal and we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony, please? I have no raised hands, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe McEckern, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office would like to go on record and support.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval for an accessory personal quarter only, not a additional dwelling unit and for this petition only.
Sorry, for the accessory, say that again?
For accessory personal quarter.
Okay.
Not for an additional dwelling unit.
Okay. May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Miss Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, members of the board.
All right, thank you all. Have a good day.
Thank you. Have a good day, folks.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you, everyone.